I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Wal.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
And Councilmember Ryan asked to be excused.
Move to excuse Councilmember Ryan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? He is excused. Thank you. So next is general public comment. Do we have any, any public comments?
We do. It's Victor Eskenazi. And then Victor, one moment, please, because now I'm going to start reading protocol before a public comment. So the city welcomes general public comments at the beginning of council work sessions and meetings and comments on a particular agenda item at the time it is being discussed. Public comments are for the official record. Council does not respond to comments or questions during this time. Address the council as a whole, and comments shall pertain to topics not individual council members, staff, or audience members. Clearly state your name and your city of residence and limit your comments to no more than five minutes. The clerk will terminate, sorry, comments beyond the allotted time or if there is a violation of the comment behavior guidelines. Written comments received will be added to the official record but will not be read aloud. Okay, Victor, you have five minutes.
... and I'd like to, in a sense, apologize. I'm very grateful. Just recently, I had a very interesting conversation with someone, and it was about one of your favorite topics, but really, but really, it opened my ears to something which I've heard being said, but kind of got discounted. And that term is safety. And from my perspective, both pro and con of the topic were really speaking about safety from our and their own perspectives. And I'd really appreciate it if the council would think about, or actually, help promote some discussions about safety. What does safety really mean? How much surveillance does safety provide? Are you safe by? And how much does, or is it really making you unsafe? Because I feel, you know, if you say, yeah, if my car is stolen, I really like to know, I'm going to get it back real soon and get it into condition, and that's the safety of your car. And at the same time, other people are concerned about the safety of other people being kidnapped, sent into a war zone where they don't even speak the language. So in a sense, I can understand how safety is an issue as well as trust. So I, again, I really appreciate that conversation with that person. It really helped me out of, you know, helped me think about that in a whole different way. And I think it would be really interesting to get some open feedback from people in small talk groups, whatnot. What's safety, what is safety to you? And does surveillance really make you safer? Or does invade upon your privacy and all of those things? So thank you for the conversation. I appreciate that. I'd love to have more of those conversations. And looking forward to those discussions on safety and trust. Thank you.
No one else has signed up to speak remotely or in person.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a long agenda tonight. So we'll just kind of jump into the number four, which is the presentation on the draft housing action plan with our building official, Matthew Guzal.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Council. I'm going to let McKenzie take over here and go through the presentation that we've been diligently working on for you all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Back here tonight to talk through the draft housing action plan. Very exciting. So tonight, I'll do an overview of the housing action plan review of the housing action plan that's in your packet. I'll spend a little bit of time summarizing each section, including the context for the housing action plan, needs and opportunities that were identified, an overview of the actions, and then we'll have some discussion. Just for context as well, we did meet with the Planning Commission on Monday. They did recommend adoption with one minor change that I'll get to when we get there, basically just like adding one action, and I'll flag it for you. And so what's in the housing action plan is, again, there's, there's a section that's context, a section on housing needs and opportunities. There are, of course, the actions, and then there are four appendices that provide some additional information and context for some of the actions. There's an appendix, an appendix on the comprehensive plan information sources that we used. There's a summary of the community engagement that we did, which includes interviews with developers, other real estate professionals, the open house that we did here to gather public feedback, other conversations that we've had with city staff, Planning Commission, you all, of course, and other stakeholders. And so there's a summary of that, the key themes that we got out of those interactions. There's also a memo summarizing our findings from the development feasibility analysis that we did, specifically looking at the impact of MFTE, both from a fiscal perspective for the city as well as on a development perspective for a developer, and the impact on overall feasibility for different types of housing. And finally, there is a crosswalk between the housing action plan actions and the comp plan policies, so that you can see the interaction between the different actions that implement each policy and which, yeah, which policies apply for each action. So the context for the housing action plan, and we talked about this a little bit the last time that we were here, when we talked about the framing and the purpose of the housing action plan, and how we were thinking about prioritizing all of the different feedback and inputs that we were getting into the set of actions, as well as how to prioritize when the city would take each action. And so what the housing action plan does is translate the housing element into a set of concrete actions, including identifying steps the city can take to increase housing options and affordability. It builds on recent zoning updates and other ongoing work, so that there's consistency between policy direction and implementation. It identifies programs, partnerships, and strategy that support Mallick Terrace's housing goals. And it helps the city make informed decisions about what to implement first based on different community priorities. It is meant to be a guide for the city to use as it implements the housing element over the next 10 years. It's not meant to be like a binding document that the city must follow, but it's meant to pull together all of the different information that we have heard and really try to identify a roadmap for the city to follow as it works towards its housing goals. So when we were thinking about how to prioritize the different actions, this is related to the conversation that we had last time that we were here, talking about what, what is most important to the city? What actions should the city think about taking first? What is important to the community? Of course, a lot of this work has already been done with the comprehensive plan and the housing element, but there are also a lot of goals, a lot to bite off. And so how do you start to think about what to do first? And so from the different conversations that we had and the different sources that we reviewed, we identified a few policy priorities, which were supporting housing production, investing in centers, incentivizing affordable units, increasing housing diversity, and preventing displacement. And so using those five priorities, we organized the actions into implementation timeframes. And those timeframes are things that are already completed, actions that are currently in progress, actions to be completed in the near term, which would be in the next like one to three years or so, actions to be completed midterm, three to five years or so, and then long-term actions that require a bit more investment for the city to achieve. There are also ongoing actions that the city, some of which the city is already doing, and some of which the city intends to start doing soon, but that wouldn't necessarily be completed at any point during that 10 years. It would, they're more ongoing actions that the city continues to do. And so this is, there's an example of one of the actions. So each action has this information, there's an action sheet associated with it, and each one has implementation timeframe, the action type, staff capacity that would be needed for implementation and maintenance, the rationale for the action, supporting housing element policies, what the city is currently doing in terms of policy or process, any implementation considerations, either for fully implementing the action or as an initial next step to implementing the midterm and long-term actions, recognizing that there are things that the city can begin to do now, but also because their longer-term conditions may change, priorities may change, and so what implementation looks like for those actions may evolve over time, though we've identified the first step. And then finally, when relevant, actions have relevant data, legislation, engagement themes, or analysis findings summarized. This is, I will go through this in smaller chunks, but this is an overview of all of the housing action plan actions by timeframe. Again, we have completed action, in-progress actions, near-term actions, midterm, long-term actions, and then ongoing actions. And the change that the Planning Commission would like to see is adding a action 5.13 in the ongoing action section about engaging with the development community on an ongoing basis and having that be a formal policy or practice that the city does, as well as bringing that feedback back to the decision-makers. And so I'll go through the actions by timeframe. So the things that the city has already done, as you know, is recently updated the zoning and design standards in residential zones. As part of that, the city also now offers density bonuses for environmentally sustainable building practices. And prior to that, with the comprehensive plan, the city reviewed and updated its land use regulations to provide increased residential capacity to accommodate the housing targets. Currently, the city is updating its permitting forms to reflect the updated housing allowances and housing types in the residential zones that came along with the zoning update. The city is also working on simplifying ADU permitting requirements. They are changing to a building permit-only process, which is a similar process to single-family and duplex requirements and is a much simpler process than the previous practice, which will make ADU development more accessible, especially for smaller developers or homeowners who don't necessarily have a lot of development experience, and it will reduce time and costs. The city is also updating its impact fee assessments to per-square-foot calculation so that it's proportional to unit sizes. This is both in alignment with state legislation, as well as Mallick Terrace's housing goals of encouraging middle housing and smaller units. The city is currently updating its development regulations for its zones and the gateway and neighborhood mixed-use land use areas. And lastly, they are working on providing, developing and providing educational materials on the development process. And that includes handouts and information on, you know, permits, building considerations, financing, different aspects of the development process that can be hard to navigate, especially for people who don't have a lot of development experience. The near-term actions. First, the Planning Commission is planning to review and update sub-area plans over the next year to reflect the comprehensive plan designations and add detail to support the city's housing goals. The city is also planning to review the town center zoning and design standards and consider any adjustments that might be needed to support development. They are looking at reviewing and updating the mobile home park standards, specifically to remove barriers to replacing and updating aging units. They're also updating permitted tables, permitted use tables for permanent supportive housing and emergency housing that would expand where those uses are allowed. That's also in alignment with some state legislation, as well as supporting housing that's typically for residents who earn less than 30% of the area median income or very low income. The city is also clarifying its regulations and definitions for small and alternative housing types. Again, that's ADUs, but also tiny homes and modular units and other small housing types that specifically or particularly homeowners might be interested in adding to their property. City is also planning to adopt building code amendments, both to reduce barriers to home repair and rehabilitation, as well as adopt upcoming 2026 updates for multifamily housing that the, the Washington Building Code at the state level is currently working on. City is also considering simplifying the permit review process for middle housing. This would be similar to the change for the ADU permitting practices, basically just trying to simplify that process to reduce development time and costs. Also amending the permit review process for projects with income-restricted affordable housing units to promote affordable housing, or to provide an incentive and help expedite it. And finally, offering a property tax exemptions for ADUs rented to low-income households per state statute that's defined as below 60% AMI, which would both offer an incentive for ADU production, offering a tax exemption for the homeowner, as well as expanding the supply of affordable rental options for Mallick Terrace renters. In the midterm, the city is planning to consider waiving or reducing impact fees for affordable housing, considering adopting density bonuses for affordable housing, specifically in the gateway and neighborhood mixed-use zones. That is something the city has in the residential zones, but looking at also expanding that to gateway and neighborhood mixed-use to encourage affordable housing development. Considering expanding tenant protections or strategies to provide lower-income renters resources and information to help reduce displacement risk and housing instability. And then there's a suite of MFTE expansion or program update options for the city to consider. Again, this was informed by the development feasibility analysis that we did, that's summarized in the appendix, but these options are adopting a 12-year MFTE program in R2 for projects. That would be aligned with the middle housing, affordable housing density bonus option that was just adopted with the zoning update. And that would be for projects building five or six units, which is already in that affordable housing density bonus, but would help increase feasibility for actually engaging in that option for developers. It's also an opportunity to adopt an eight-year MFTE program in R3 for stacked housing development with at least 10 units, at which point some state requirements for accessible units kick in, specifically for stacked housing with at least 10 units. And in R3, adopting a 12-year MFTE program, again, or similar to the R2 MFTE expansion, that would be in line with the housing density bonus requirements or the affordable housing density bonus, and that would, again, help incentivize participation in that program. Finally, expanding the 12-year town center MFTE program to gateway and neighborhood mixed-use zones, and continuing to offer MFTE in town center, but considering phasing out the eight-year option to only offer the 12-year program, that there are trade-offs to doing that, and so that's something, along with all of these changes, for the city to consider, but thinking about when you reach that point to have that discussion, there are, the different development conditions might change, but thinking about how the city wants to frame its incentives in that zone to like build out its goals, basically. In the long term, considering encouraging any affordable homeownership units to be developed or to be stewarded by a community land trust to help encourage long-term affordability, in particular with MFTE, that's a program that typically expires after 12 years, and so if you can partner with a community land trust to extend that affordability for the long term, then those units don't expire. Surveying the city's existing real estate holdings and considering transferring any property or providing a long-term lease to mission-driven developers to support project feasibility, as well as increase competitiveness for public funding for those developers. Considering strategically targeting public investments to add amenities to attract development in areas identified as priority growth areas in the comprehensive plan, and pursuing funding for infrastructure improvements, such as utility upgrades, that could improve feasibility for mission-driven organizations to acquire and preserve at-risk affordable housing. The final category, ongoing actions and partnerships. First, continuing to participate in regional housing efforts, currently participating in the Affordable Housing Alliance, Housing Consortium, Snohomish County tomorrow, increasing coordination between representatives, proactively engaging Snohomish County to clarify plans for distributing affordable housing funding and encouraging investment in Mallick Terrace. Continuing to support applications for public affordable housing funds, such as home or long-term housing tax credits for projects that align with the city's priorities. Also for affordable housing, pursuing opportunities to support development on properties owned by religious organizations that are eligible for some additional density bonuses per state legislation, and also establishing relationships with community land trusts in the region to support alternative homeownership models. For housing production more generally, hosting community workshops, this is something the city already does, but hosting workshops that really focus on the development process to provide hands-on technical assistance for homeowners, small developers, residents to really learn about the development process, ask questions, and receive direct support. City also provides great assistance, we heard this across the board, from different developers that we interviewed, and so continuing to provide assistance for navigating permitting procedures and requirements. Next, supporting opportunities to purchase manufactured home communities, and that would look like facilitating access to technical assistance, outreach, or partnership to really support community stability in those communities, some of which can be more vulnerable to displacement. Also enforcing maintenance of investment properties to disincentivize vacant or deteriorating buildings, specifically in town center, to encourage housing occupation and the use of that housing for housing while it's there in the town center. And then lastly, when the city is providing public comment, make sure that, advocating for expanded opportunities for condominiums via legislative change, and then monitoring land capacity and development trends, as well as affordable housing that is at risk at redevelopment, so that you can proactively make changes. And then finally, just as a reminder, there was also, the Planning Commission had asked for an additional action added to this list that is engaging with the development community and reporting back to decision-makers. So I know that was a ton of information that I went through very quickly, but today is your opportunity to ask questions. We'd love to hear your feedback. And then on December 4th, we will be back here for a public hearing. Thank you.
Okay. So does anyone have any, does anyone have any questions? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Really, just a quick one, and there'll be lots more another time, but 5.9, that has caught my attention, enforce maintenance of investment properties to disincentivize vacant or deteriorating buildings. Can you give us some examples of what you've seen? Give me an idea what that looks like, and if you can make it tailored to this city, even better, but just curious what that looks like.
5.9, enforcement, maintenance of investment properties to de-incentivize vacant or deteriorating buildings in the town center. It's kind of the direction that we're going now on the red onion that is now gone. We worked diligently for a building that was not being invested in. It was becoming a life safety issue, so we walked through our 1.15, which is our co-compliance process, which also utilizes the property maintenance code to get it to be a place where it's safe for the entire community, which also encourages developers to come in and take advantage of the vacant land, to see what they can do in the future, which is slightly better than seeing dilapidated building kind of falling apart.
So I think, thank you for that. That was what I had in mind and presumed that was the case. I think what I'm asking for is that, is there other examples of what we can do? Or are we doing the most in that section? Because to me, I'm thinking that is definitely a priority over on this side of the table. But are we missing something there?
No, yeah, so this is a roadmap, so we're continuing to grow and evolve our processes. So there's other tools that we can utilize as we test these processes, like we did with the buildings that got demolished, and we followed code. We did learn some things, so we'll be adjusting them, and then doing a larger implementation as we test run them and have success.
All right. Anyone else? Councilmember Sonmore?
Just to go off what you're saying, too, I just want, since we're talking about that, the 236 house that's been overgrown and dilapidated for 18 years, how come that gets to stay like that? I know we have talked about it before. I heard it was a drug house, and they sealed it up, but recently, I heard that somebody else owned it nearby, but there's other rules that other cities are using for drug houses. They tear them down, put a lien on them, and I know sometimes it doesn't coordinate with some of the city policies, but there's a state policy that people are using to do that, and so it's like zero tolerance. And I know some cities have taken down quite a few homes that have been an extreme nuisance, and so that's kind of following up in red onion. That took a long, long time to get brought down, and it was educated to us that it does deter people from wanting to build here when they see things like that. So thank you for bringing that up again. I just had some questions about, it says by implementation timeframe, so is this what you're expecting us to do? Or each column is something that you'll bring back to discuss with? Because like, mobile homes years ago, the mayor knows a lot more than I do about this, but we had a lot of issues with mobile homes, and people were selling the properties and kicking the people out, and they had nowhere to go. It was a horrible prospect, but I know you're looking at ways of taking the ones that are in bad shape and deteriorating and be able to replace those. Are we doing anything to protect the property other than that for mobile homeowners? I know we still have a few parks left.
Yeah, what we're trying to do is give them more opportunity to utilize that space the best, the way they see fit. So a lot of those are restricted by how many units they can have in there. So what we want to do is we want to reevaluate it and look at what opportunities we can have in those spaces to maybe fit more units, as units have changed size and smaller units are being utilized more, as opposed to the modular units that are like 900 square feet. So the big thing is, this is a roadmap, and we're going to evaluate these and bring them back to you as we're making decisions. But when it comes to the manufactured displacement is a big thing that we're looking at, as well as giving, giving opportunities to those that are already zoned for that, to be able to expand uses in that space to fit more, more units.
That's good to hear. I just had two, two more. One was a comment, when you, so when you go to do these assessments, are you also going to do assessment to the bottom line to the city? Because once it hits the city, and the city loses money, a lot of times that's passed on to our residents. And so sometimes when we do good effort type of projects, sometimes they come back to bite us, such as tax incentives. I think it worked well when it first started as a program. I don't think it's working well now. I don't think that we're getting enough or on our return. When you give somebody $9 million and they only house like 13 people a year, I think we could have demanded more. I don't think the developer were to walk. Sometimes they may walk if they're a local developer, but if they're a regional or out-of-state developer, a lot of times, cities are saying that they won't walk, but now it's used as a tool to kind of batter the cities to say, okay, I expect this, I expect this, I expect that, but the bottom line is, you know, funds are changing and things are, are changing, and a lot of times I don't see that $9 million housing 13 people, when we may have gotten 15 people or 20 people, you know, for our return on visit, but I don't see the city pushing back a lot of times on that.
Yeah, I appreciate your question. The biggest thing that we do when we're evaluating in one of these, each one of these phases, like I said, it's a roadmap. Political climate... Political climate, investment, things will change and adjust the direction that we're going in. The emphasis of each one of these line items can shift based on your direction as well as Planning Commission. What I would say for us, the biggest thing that we utilize is data dictates decisions. So I don't believe in feel-good legislation or feel-good code, putting something in there if it's not going to give us ultimately what city council's looking for, for Mount Lake Terrace. So when we're going to, when we're evaluating the data and we provide you with the data, we're going to have the pros and cons to it. And then you get to weigh that with the data we provide if you believe it's going to work best for the city. And like I said, those priorities can shift as we, as we get there. And maybe what might not work now will look good two, two years from now, three years from now. So we want to have all the options in there so that you can weigh those options at the time that we bring them forward.
Right. And one of the examples I always give, we have a house, let's say it's worth $500,000 and it's affordable to that person at the time, or it could be affordable to a family at the time. And I'm not saying 500,000 is always affordable, I'm just giving an example. But then a developer comes along, wipes out the house, wipes down the whole property and builds eight townhomes for $900,000 apiece, you know? And so there's some give and take to what we're doing and how it's changing the environment and how our traffic and a lot of our different sewers. And we're always told that, in my little soapbox, we were always told that adding more people to the city wouldn't cost us anything and it would pay for itself, but it's not really doing that. And so I'm looking forward to hearing what you have to say about this. I thought the presentation was extremely well put together and was easy to follow and I appreciate that. So it's going to be interesting because, you know, we do want to help people, but there's so many different constraints. And I think that's going to be, what's going to be interesting to hear where those constraints are, what we can do and what we can't do. Because a lot of people just think, why aren't you putting up affordable housing? And it's like, well, I'm not a builder, our city's not a builder. And so it's managing those expectations on what we can do and what we actually can't do. And you know, you say about politics, you know, it's funny because we look at rent, you know, putting limits on rentals and, you know, not being able to fluctuate the price. And there's so many things out of the city's control that it's, it's a hard avenue to take sometimes.
Yeah, housing is a multifaceted thing and for sure. That's why as you're going through this, you see us trying to go at it from many different angles. And that's why trying to provide multiple housing types is one of the best ways for our community to provide options. So if we don't want all townhomes, as you said, then we need to give developers other opportunities and make sure that it calks out as the things that we can control to encourage those other housing types. And that's, that's what this is focusing on.
Yes, that's where I'm interested in too. What make, I would like to hear what makes, because we've met with builders and before, what makes them want to build? And most of the time, it's a return on investment, right? And so they're not going to do it just because, and that's where we've looked to the state. Hey, what, you know, what can you build here? Because our city was built on low-income housing. I mean, that's what we were known for. And we used to get upset because other cities weren't building low-income in their areas as well. And we've always tried to do that. And we've got to a point now that, you know, our land prices have gone up, it's really shifted. And so it's a little bit different than it used to be.
Well, I look forward to working with you and fleshing this out.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick.
I just wanted mostly to say thank you. I'm super excited about this. I mean, we've talked a lot about housing need and housing affordability. And to your point, it is multifaceted and a really complex issue. And so having a plan that speaks to all of the different ways, or at least a whole lot of the different ways we can potentially approach it to better support our community's need is super exciting. And I think it's a really foundational piece of the work moving forward. And so I just, I'm excited to have a plan. I love that the plan is flexible. I like that there is, like if this doesn't work, there's a middle ground. I mean, I just, I think it allows lots of flexibility, you know, but it ensures that we have a clear roadmap that helps us to move things forward because people are struggling, right? And we know that, right? And I love that it makes sure that there are anti-displacement measures and that we are looking at ways to keep folks in the community who want to stay in the community while still looking at how do we increase market rate housing? How do we find more affordable housing options? I just, I think it's really comprehensive. I think it's really thoughtful. I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. And I'm really excited to move forward with it. Will we have like an annual review of kind of where we're at with things? Or what is, assuming we vote to move forward, what does that look like?
Yeah, we'll have several touchpoints. I like to say this is like a funnel approach. This keeps us on task to make sure we're getting to the end result that we're looking for. And we're going to have several touchpoints as we're processing through this to get guidance from you and Planning Commission. So it's kind of when we get to strategic areas where we have valuable information, data for you to analyze, then we'll be happy to bring you in to help navigate what the next steps will be.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Page?
Really thank you, you know, for your presentation. I think that just a couple of things that really jump out at me is I'm very impressed with, you know, you have action sheets, action sheets, the thought and process that went into putting it together. And it looked like you really thought out, you know, a lot about what all the different things that needs to be considered for each one of these, these action items, which is, I think, extremely impressive. The, so thank you for, for that whole thought process. You know, the thing that I'm wondering about is, you know, you know, I've been hearing a lot about the CLTs, you know, so, and it sounds like, you know, a way to get some progress as far as, you know, affordable housing and, you know, who's running it and everything. Have you had opportunity to see where it's working within, you know, maybe the county or, you know, who's doing it better than others? And what type of view are you looking at it from, you know, from those places that you've had opportunity to, in order to put that on the list here?
Yeah, I appreciate that. This was definitely a team effort, Christie's lead direction along with the rest of CED and McKenzie and their team. So what they were, what their team was able to provide is what other jurisdictions have, how have they utilized it and what has worked and what's not. So I'll let you weigh in on what you've seen in other areas.
Yeah, so there, there is one CLT working in Snohomish County right now. They have not done any projects in Mount Lake Terrace, but they have in other jurisdictions around the county. And they're called, I think, Hope and Home CLT. So they're a great organization to engage with. There is also a much larger community land trust in King County, whose name I am blanking on right now, but we've engaged with them a lot for other projects as well to gather guest best practices. And it is, it's a unique model. It's kind of a newer model. I mean, it's a newer model in that it is becoming more common. And I do think that there are a lot of lessons learned from the past like two decades or so as this model has become more prevalent, just because of the way, especially for affordable homeownership, that they are able to do the administrative side of that in a way that a lot of cities aren't able to, just because of the upkeep on making sure that compliance is certified and monitoring sales and all of that. And so that's, that's really what the advantage for them is.
Okay. The...
3.3, strategically target.
Strategically target public investments. What does that look like to you?
This came directly out of a conversation that I had with a developer who works in Mount Lake Terrace. And they had mentioned that for them, when they're looking at places where they're looking to develop, places where there have already been investments in parks and sidewalks and walkability and the type of infrastructure that draws residents, that is very attractive to them because they know that if they build a building in that city, in that location, residents are already attracted to that city. And it's a lot easier for them to, A, get financing because they are able to demonstrate, like, we are confident that we will be able to fill this building if we build it, as well as looking at their bottom line. And so that's where that action came from.
Okay.
And that also, sorry. And that also aligns with, if the infrastructure's already there, it lowers their cost per square foot for building it out. So if they don't have to do street frontage improvements, run utility lines, and it's already readily available, it drastically reduces the amount of investment they have to put in. They can mainly focus on building the building, not bringing in infrastructure.
Okay. And I know you keep using the term, well, this is a roadmap. This is a roadmap. So as your roadmap is developing, is your plan, you know, as things are working, to come back to council and say, which, which one of these things do you want us to prioritize more? Or is that something that you are going to be doing and because of the direction that you're moving in or the progress that you're making and saying, well, this is where we're prioritizing because of?
Yeah, you can kind of see the roadmap has gone over of things we're actively doing, midterm, long-term. So that is kind of our trajectory. Planning Commission did have some input on wanting to re-prioritize that. So as we're implementing, looking at some of these options and moving forward with them, there will be touchpoints on if this is the right time for this or if we need to pivot to focus on something else. Because all of these, all these will end up being codified in code. So as we come to you, it'll be, once we figure out what this looks like and how we're actually going to implement it, again, several touchpoints to get there, then we have to look at amending our code and amending other items to actually be able to work it out.
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Perthamwal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the great work on this. This is, as Councilmember Murray points out, I'm just really excited that we're having, that we're having this discussion. We have this roadmap, great, great strategies to consider. Couple of things I wanted to touch on when, in going through, first of all, I guess I want to run back to the code enforcement and dilapidated building projects discussion. Just to touch on, I've actually had a couple of conversations with people that have been faced with both code enforcement issues and challenges that they're then required to go through the permitting process. And the permitting process is longer than the enforcement timeline. And so that's caused concerns. Another area of, another area that is, I think we need to pay attention to is, I mean, yes, we want to enforce our code and keep our properties clean. And yes, we want to encourage redevelopment of properties. But I think we need to, another situation, another thing that I'll be talking further about is a property that is interested in redeveloping but has challenges based on the zoning and circumstances. So I think it's important to build into that, into the consideration as we're working with both code enforcement and trying to encourage redevelopment, to understand the circumstances of the property and the challenges and barriers that are in place based on the zoning and try and figure out, you know, work with the property owners that want to redevelop but are faced with challenges and figure out how to overcome those challenges. So getting to, yes, you know, facilitating the discussion with the different groups to figure out how do we get to where we need to be. So I think that's something we want to build into that consideration. Couple of areas, when simplify the permit review process was focused on middle housing and income restricted housing, which is great. I would actually expand that to all housing in general. We're still fighting a reputation of being a challenge, a jurisdiction challenging to work with, to work in the development community. And so we need to, A, do more to overcome that reputation. Part of it is just education. And I know we're doing a lot of great things. We've been, over the last several years, making a lot of progress. And so we need to advertise that. We need to let people know what we've been doing to improve our process. But there's still ways, there's still opportunities to simplify our process in other areas. And so we need to continue looking at that, not just for middle housing and income restricted, but for all housing. And figure out how do we simplify our permitting, our process in general. I'm going to, actually, let me come back to the income restricted housing and talk about the tenant protections real quick. Getting to tenant protections, looking at notices and relocation assistance. And then rather than just focusing only on late fees and caps, just talk about fees in general. One area that I really, actually prefer us focus on is junk fees. You know, we've had that discussion a few years ago and that's a real problem. And I don't know how much of it is a problem here in Mount Lake Terrace, but it's something that we need to be aware of and pay attention to. And that's, in, as far as tenant protections, that would be the first area I'd like to see us pursue, is look at junk fees and figure out how do we go that direction on restricting junk fees. So that would, I'd love to see us add that into our considerations on tenant protections. Okay, so income restricted housing. Walk us through two different things on that. One is what kind of programs are restricting housing? For instance, multifamily tax exemption is restricting or provides affordable housing for that program, right? For, and so that would be restricting the income requirements allowed to be able to ensure, to allow for them to take advantage of that program. I think we talked about impact fees. What other programs are we looking at for providing? And then what kind of incentives are we looking at? So the tax exemption, property tax exemption, impact fees, waiving impact fees for affordable housing, process, density bonuses. So walk us through the programs and the incentives.
Well, the quick answer is yes. We're evaluating all of them. So as, as you can see, some of those are further down the line. So we want to be able to make sure that we're evaluating it holistically to make sure that we're both protecting the city's interests as well as providing opportunity. So the multifamily tax exemption, we can build it out so it works well for our city. I don't think we've done enough analysis to figure out exactly how we're going to do that. That's why it's slightly further down the line so that way we can get enough information. I can have McKenzie speak to what other municipalities are doing that are being successful that was the reason we put it in, because we've seen it work other places. If you want to.
Yeah, I'll also add that MFTE focuses housing at, you know, the 80% to 60% AMI level. It doesn't necessarily get at very low-income housing. And so when you're looking at that type of housing, you're really looking at partnering with mission-driven nonprofit developers who are accessing affordable housing funds either through the county or low-income housing tax credits. And for them, and I interviewed someone who was very helpful for this as well, and what they had said was, as much as the city can partner with us in those applications as well as providing any material supports if possible, like all of that goes a really long way. Because when they're competing for limited funds to be able to develop a project, being able to show that we are working with the city, they are removing any barriers that we might be encountering, or they're, they're committed to working with us to try to remove those barriers. They have committed to providing land at a long-term, low-income lease. Things like that are very helpful for those applications and that funding is really what unlocks that type of housing. And there's also an action in there, and the ongoing actions that's engaging with the county and their plans for distributing the sales tax funds that they've collected. And really having a dialogue, an ongoing dialogue with them about how are you distributing that? What are the criteria? How can we, as Mount Lake Terrace, try to help connect mission-driven developers with that funding?
Yeah, thank you, actually. I appreciate you bringing up that point because I did want to highlight that as an important piece. And I think it's, that's particularly an area that we, as a South County region, need to be working together to address that. We've been having a lot of great discussions with our regional collaboration group. We were kind of touching on that through Snohomish County tomorrow as well. I think there's, you know, there's a lot of work that can be done to help us fine-tune how those dollars are being utilized at the county-wide level. And we need to work together, not just with the county, but as a South County region to try and figure that out and direct those dollars back here to this region. And we're certainly, our doors are open to allowing those projects. We've got to work to figure out how, and there's a lot, it's a very complicated, you know, funding sources involved from the federal level, the state level and the regional level, and being able to tap into that and finding developers and the property. And I mean, it's, it's a complicated mess that we need to spend a lot of time working on. And I think we need to do it as a South County region. So being able to highlight that in that section, not only working that section, not only working with the county, but the South County region particularly. So, but, so getting back to the different programs, I really, what we've identified in here, but I'm wondering, are there other opportunities beyond multifamily tax exemptions, impact fees, you know, things, you know, what are, what are other programs that we can tap into and utilize to be able to provide density bonuses and improving the process, et cetera?
Yeah, I mean, we evaluated them through our team, and the ones that we have proposed in here are things that, what we think is, works best for the city of Mount Lake Terrace, to get the density that we need and have the control to make sure they're going in the strategic places that work best for our community and not impact certain strategic areas. So I'm more than happy if council hears of something else that they'd like us to evaluate, more than happy to do that, but I want to make sure that we are very aligned in the funnel approach of making sure that we're staying inside of what we're trying to evaluate so that we get to an end result, so that way we're not chasing all the opportunities, but strategic ones that will work best for the city of Mount Lake Terrace.
Yeah, there's really two, two kind of buckets of program, program incentive types, and there are things like MFTE that really target more like workforce housing type affordability, 60% to 80% AMI, and so those, you are working with, it's like mixed income development, you're probably working with market rate developers, it's not nonprofit housing developers, and so tax exemptions, waiving impact fees, allowing additional market rate units with the addition of affordable units, those types of things, basically any lever that you can pull to either increase the revenue or decrease their costs, basically, and then for the low-income affordable housing, you're looking at tapping into state and federal funds.
Thank you. One program that's not necessarily an affordable housing program, but I'm interested if we've evaluated at all, LCLIP, as a tool to be able to help us provide infrastructure, yet there's challenges to it as well. I mean, it's another complicated program that has potential huge bonuses for the city, but also complications that might be challenged. Just curious if you've done any evaluations on utilizing that tool?
I am actually currently working with Snohomish County on evaluating transfer development rate programs and LCLIP for all cities in Snohomish County, including Mount Lake Terrace. You do currently have an interlocal agreement? No? No?
We do with TDRs.
Yes, with TDRs, not LCLIP. And so we're looking at, for eligible jurisdictions, including yours, who may be engaging with parts of the program, may not be engaging with the program at all, looking at what, how feasible it would be to get engaged with that program, because for LCLIP, getting that infrastructure funding is really helpful, and it's one of a few places where you can tap into infrastructure funding, community development block grants at the county level are another one. So, long story short, yes, that project is going over the next, like, year, year and a half or so.
Thank you, I look forward to hearing more about that, as you evaluate the program and have some results to be able to share. But overall, appreciate all the work that's been done, and appreciate the direction we're going and look forward to it, getting it adopted and starting to implement the action strategies, thank you.
Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you.
I just have a few things here. So the mobile home changes, I really like that there's a way of getting rid of the old mobile homes to be replaced with the new ones, because you can't get financing for anything older than 1976, and single wides are really difficult, too. But are we looking to get more single wides in there so that we can get more to fit in?
In communicating with them, we found that one of their restrictions is because they're kind of locked in with how many spaces they have, that they would like opportunities to put smaller units in there, so smaller modular units. So when we were evaluating it, and to help with displacement and create different housing types, we wanted to look at, how could we reconfigure the space, meet our minimum criteria, or possibly just minor portions of the code to allow higher density, which means more smaller units, as opposed to the historical ones that are in there, the long double wides or the single wides, as modular structures have changed quite a bit.
Okay, and the financing for those, we've got to figure that out later. Okay, stack condos, if we can, if we can get stacked condos in there, I mean stacked units, which will be condos, hopefully, if you, if you get a unit of 30 of those, you will have 30 homes to sell in Mount Lake Terrace for a family to move into. That is, I've been talking to so many people, there's so many houses in Mount Lake Terrace and throughout that have one person living in a three-bedroom house, and because they have no place else to go to, and they're not going to buy a townhome. So stacked condos, and then rentals, that'll help, too, because not, not everybody is going to rent a large apartment complex, or they need different types, they need an elevator, and so forth. The CLT, the Community Land Trust, it sounds like a lot of people still need to figure out what exactly that is and how it works, so maybe we can have a, Jeff, maybe we can have a person come in, like Kim, what's Kim's last name? No, Kim, she's in charge of Community Land Trust in Snohomish County. She can come and talk about it, and in order to get affordable housing below the 80% AMI, we need to have, we need to partner with nonprofits, there's just no other way of doing it, and the other way is vouchers, and to build a building that will accept vouchers, because a lot of times the voucher holders have a challenge of fighting with the market rate people, and then they can't get, even though they have a voucher, they just can't find a place to rent. So we need to have available housing for them if they have a voucher, so a building that is voucher-friendly. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Manager. But really, I had one comment, now two. One, I was laughing with someone saying, you know, been on the council long enough for things to circle back around and act like we'd never heard it before, which is to say, LCLIP was interesting to have that come up here. We considered that, and if I remember correctly, it went a four-three vote, so we almost considered it, so if it comes back around, there's a whole conversation about, what was the council willing to do in terms of entertaining ideas? So I have one of those quirky memories, so I don't need to go and search that one, I remember that one well. But the comment I actually wanted to leave you with was anecdotal, which is, one of the veteran services I was able to make it to was Linwood on Tuesday, and I give you that context to say that it was not in Mount Lake Terrace, clearly was not about housing, but I found myself standing next to, and I didn't realize it until he spoke up, to give you all credit, to say that he was really pleased with the action plan, the way that is shaping, and been paying attention to it, owns three properties here that he's been sitting back on, waiting to have developed, until we get our act together, was his words, and our act is almost together from that person's perspective, so I just wanted to give you that anecdotal feedback of, hey, that was pretty powerful, not in my city, and no reason to bring that up, but is invested in this process, so I'm hoping I can talk him into coming to the public hearing or to talking to one of you on that side of the table, before it's all said and done, because I started, done a conversation about setbacks and some other acronyms, and I just started going, okay, just trying to watch the service, but nonetheless, kudos to you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we'd be happy to engage if they end up coming out.
All right, I don't think there's any more questions, so, thank you very much, so we'll move on to the next, which is still going to be Matthew. And that is the review of the resolution, resolution adopting community and economic development fee service.
All right, a little musical chairs, so I did not make a slideshow, as we're making minor changes this year. Thankfully, we have made some amazing progress in timelines and serving our public, but we are continuing to work diligently to reduce those timelines, and our fee schedule is going to help us with that and making some of those adjustments. So we'll go over the building plans, building fees first. So some of the minor changes is doing evaluating to make sure that we are serving stakeholders and permit holders as best we can. We found out that our low-voltage permits, we could actually reduce the cost as, now that we have data from our new software, we found our engagement is less than what the permit price was previously, so we actually lowered the cost by half for low-voltage electrical permits. So we've heard a lot of applicants wanting to lower them, as we are higher than other jurisdictions, we were able to take the data and make a decision and found that we could reduce them to be in line with the amount of time it takes for us to process them and make sure that we're still working towards getting our five-year cost recovery plan. Also, one of the big things that we're looking at doing and implementing is a over-the-counter permit. So over-the-counter permit will be a flat fee, $465 per space, up to three, so you could do up to three bathrooms, two bathrooms and a kitchen, and you'd have, it'd be $465 per space, and that over-the-counter remodel would mean that there's no framing changes or modifications. So if you're not replacing any studs, you're not moving any walls, making modifications, then there would be no planner view, our planner view would basically be in the field as you're doing your work. So those people that want to get remodels done quickly can get their permits pulled, and will get inspection Monday through Friday the next day, so. And excited to institute that. Also demolitions, we've had a lot of homeowners that want to do investigative work on their space before they pull the building permit, we did not have a method to do that, so we've added a demolition interior residential permit, so as someone's trying to figure out where their point loads are, have an engineer come out, they want to be able to open up the walls and kind of expose things, we now have a permit to give them an opportunity to do that, as well as a commercial demolition interior, where we have applicants wanting to adjust tenant improvements, get everything out of there first before they send their team in to figure out how they're going to best utilize the space, we have added that to the fee schedule as well. The residential rental unit inspection program, we have been doing several of those, what we have found is not everyone reads the application documents, where it asks if you have smoke detectors, if your windows are operational, if it's safe, and what we're going out there, and we're having to go three or four times. So what we've done is we've added a re-inspection fee for $100 to make sure that we're getting compensated for those two, three visits, when we ask them the question, and we would appreciate if they read it fully, but it's a way for us to make sure that they're taking their time on the application, and if they ever have questions, we're always available to answer them. Speaking of modular structures, we're also adding a site planner view for modular structures as ADU applications are no longer going through land use, a lot of those modular structures gets inspected by Labor and Industries. Building only looks at the foundation and the utility connections, and we need to make sure that our planning team has an opportunity to look at it, to make sure that it's fitting within the design and still is in a safe place and is still meeting the minimum setback requirements. So we've added a minimum two hours for site planner view for modular structures when they want to, which a lot of places are doing, just training an ADU in the backyard. So we want to make sure that that's, those are still being done safe and that we have the oversight that we need. So no large changes in the building side besides those, any questions on the building side before I jump to planning?
Any questions?
All right, and then we'll jump into the planning. So again, with keeping in with state regulations, there is no longer a land use requirement for ADUs, so we have removed that from the fee schedule. We have added some language to make sure that when, like, annexations take place, that they take care of the recording fee, just providing clarity. The DNS with a planned action and the DNS for environmental CEPA review, we, looking at the data, we have demonstrated that we don't need as many hours to do those reviews. Determination of non-significance. So, so those reviews, we're finding they're not taking as long, so we're reducing them to make sure that we can do them within five hours, and when there's a planned action connected to it, it takes us a little bit longer, but if we don't go through the whole 20 hours, the applicant will get a deposit back. And then home occupations, again, we reevaluated, and the amount of time that we're actually taking to process a home occupation application was reduced, so we've reduced the hours to reflect that. And then we've got rid of some of the single-family residential language or single-family residential, that's no longer the nomenclature that we'll be utilizing. And that is all the revisions on the land use portion of the fee schedule.
All right, are there, are there any questions?
Well, it looks like everything's getting a little bit more efficient.
We're consistently working diligently to streamline the process.
Do you think it would help if, if people had a checklist, like, is there a smoke detector? Is there CO2, so that they can check it, so they have to read that?
That, that is what's on application, so when you go through the software, it'll ask you a question, do you have interconnected smoke detectors, and they have to press yes, if they press no, then it won't let them finish, so.
That's probably why it's going through, they just want it to go through.
Which is wonderful, but life safety is our biggest concern, so we want to make sure that the people who are renting these spaces are as safe as any other single-family residential in Mount Lake Terrace, so.
Okay.
And we are working on community engagement, I'll point that out, and this next year, we are going to have four touchpoints with the community, and one of the first ones we'll be partaking of is educating and equipping Mount Lake Terrace residents to be able to apply for that ADU permit. So our hope is that we'll be able to educate them, give them the tools that they need to be successful, and if, even the opportunity to bring in plans, and we'll preemptively stamp them as we review them, so that way it would be an expedited review once they go over the counter.
All right, anyone else, Councilmember Page?
This is just for my education here, you know, has, have there been any other community, community engagements, discussions regarding, you know, permitting, say like in the last five years, by any chance? And I ask that question only because I've been here a little bit over five years, and probably the biggest chatter I hear about, you know, home ownership and changing things in your home is the permitting process, and I, so I applaud you all, you all for, you know, kind of trying to make it easier and streamlining it, and since you did mention, you know, the community engagement, I just wonder, has that been going on in the past, you know, for what you want to do in the future?
Yeah, so there hasn't been a formal process, there is, we conduct over four to six thousandths inspections a year, so my inspectors are engaging the public on a regular basis, and they're more than happy to conversate on their likes or dislikes of the permitting process during their inspection. So I do make sure that I get that input back and that when possible, we make them adjustments and amendments that we need to streamline the process. You know, there's, there's certain things that we can't make adjustments on, so unfortunately, if someone does something illegally and knowingly, we cannot reduce or expedite the process, and unfortunately, that was kind of the biggest hurdle that we've heard the most, is like, hey, we started a bathroom remodel, we didn't know we needed a permit, can I have my permit tomorrow? Well, now with the over-the-counter permit, they can, but our goal is always to engage them early and often and educate, so that way, that they know the process. So our current timeline on planner view is four to six weeks on residential and six to eight on commercial, and we do a fairly good job of making sure they get out within that timeframe. What the biggest mistake, one of the biggest complaints that we've heard is that we get the comments out, but then the plans they give us originally aren't that great, so then they have to go through a revision, submit it back in, we kind of go back and forth, and that's why we're working in 2026 to have more engaging touchpoints, where we can actually train and equip, what should a plan look like, what it should include. We have all those documentations and checklists, but for someone that's not familiar with the process, they're just kind of like, here's my window, here's my shower, isn't that good enough? Well, I'm filtering it through, you know, several codes to see if it meets code criteria or not, so I need a little bit more information when it comes to that.
Well, you know, I, you know, I respect the fact that you Well, you know, I, you know, I respect the fact that, you know, you do 4,000 inspections and they're doing engaging with the, you know, the residents at that time, but I'm thinking more in terms of, because you're the bad guys, you know, the permitting group is the bad guys. That's, you know, they, that's the perception, you know, how, because of how difficult or for all those reasons that you mentioned, okay? All those reasons, not my fault. All right? So I'm thinking more in terms of, you know, community engagement, since you say, how do we, as a, as a unit, you know, engage the group? You know, because when your people engage the individual, then five different stories hit the street, you know, and not just the one about what really happened. So, so I'm thinking in terms of how do, how does the city, you know, give, you know, our residents opportunity to kind of get the feel for what goes right, what goes wrong, where to, how to do it? Give them opportunity, not necessarily to, to blame anybody, but to, to, to learn, as you, in your words, to be educated, so that, that makes that process not only easier for them, but also easier for your office, you know, to do the job that they got to do, you know?
Yeah. We can definitely look at using one of our touchpoints with the community to make sure that we're hearing, hearing what they would like as we're evolving our permitting process in the next year.
And I think using, you know, you know, utilizing Sienna, our communications manager, she's been using a lot of the things that have been happening in the city lately, you know, using her platforms to help educate the public. If we're not doing that, or if we're not considering that, maybe we should, because again, it's another opportunity for, you know, group education versus, you know, individual muttering.
I appreciate, and I would say that there has been people that have engaged, our CED team very, very upset, that have left and said, thank you, because I didn't know. And, and that's where we want to grow and, and expedite the process, but also educating, because there's real life safety hazard that, that can happen if, if we don't do this correctly. But I love the idea of engaging the public in a kind of an open mic way where they can make themselves heard, not after they're in the middle of the process.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to move on to the review of the resolution adopting recreational We must have the whole staff here.
Well, not the whole staff.
Well, good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem and councilmembers, I'm Jeff Betts, Recreation and Parks Director for the city. And tonight I'll be co-presenting the proposed schedule for recreation and park fees and charges for the five-year period, 2026 through 2030. And I'd like to introduce to you recreation supervisors on both sides of me. We have Supervisor Rose Plouffe, Renee Norton, and Danielle Ledd. So the purpose tonight is to review that five-year schedule and then also take a look at the proposed adjustments to that five-year fee schedule that we review annually. So in that agenda, it will include some background information, the fee schedule itself, some fee comparisons, the program outlook, timeline for approval, discussion and questions, as well as the staff recommendation. So the fee process predates most of us here at the city, staff-wise anyway. Me, a couple of you were here, I suppose, but, so about in year 2000, the council adopted an ordinance that enabled recreation and parks fees to be set by an adopted, actually be set by a resolution and a five-year schedule. So staff undertake a process annually where we take a look at the demand, the cost per unit, program comparisons, the economy, as well as competition. And so that could vary depending on what the program is. And for, for example, preschool programs have a much different market than aquatics programs do or swim lessons specifically. And then same thing you could say for basketball leagues. They all attract from a different area, different marketplace, different competitors. So it's a very involved process to take a look at each individual program, to understand what we're dealing with and how to make recommendations for fee adjustments. So after we've taken a look at those factors, we also have to, most importantly, try to incorporate how to achieve our financial goals. And then additionally, on top of that, how are we going to maintain our customer base, but also on top of that, attract new customers? So that's really the key is to kind of play that in between to where we're retaining our existing customers, but also bring in a new. And then additionally, for this process, we did something different this year that we wanted to take a look at our, our resident discount rate. So our current discount rate is that 10% resident discount rate, and that's part of our, our adopted cost recovery model. So you'll see some comparisons in the charts where we show what a 20% discount rate would look like. So we shall move forward. So part of the review and approval process also, it comes within this framework that council has provided to staff. And that framework includes these, the council goals that are reflective of the things that we do. And they're listed here on this slide, those three, growing a vibrant community, responsible governance, and then informed and engaged community. And then also, we try to frame that around that the city's financial policies are specifically for us, the cost recovery of the recreation fund. So as we mentioned, so each year, we do bring this back to you. And this always looks complicated, but I'll try to explain it each year also to make sure that it's easily understood. So we take our Exhibit A, that's a part of the attachments, shows all five years of the fee schedule. But for each year and tonight, we try to show you what was approved right now for 2025. So that's that first set of columns for resident and non-resident. And then the middle columns is next year's already approved rates, since it's a five-year fee schedule, council approved that essentially last year. But then that last set of columns will show what we're proposing to change. And so we have some colors too, we're explaining, just try to make it easier to identify. So there, in the middle column, when we show blue, there would like be a blue in there, that'll be what was already approved to be increased. So that is an increase to the fee, but it was already approved. We're not recommending anything necessarily different, it's just already what's in there. And then if there is something in that far right, proposed changes column, we're proposing changes to that. So, and then you'll see after this, each relevant fee schedule, like this is aquatics one that Rose will go into in a second, you'll see comparisons, a chart that will show you what other cities do or other private entities do. And then we also have that 20% resident discount as opposed to the 10%. And we'll try to explain it each time, so it's, hopefully it's obvious. And I'll hand it off to Rose now.
Okay. So this is the fee schedule for aquatic drop-in, the punch cards and the monthly passes. We're not, we're going with everything that was already recommended and approved. The one area, the family rate, we are recommending to drop it for the, to streamline some of our processes, so.
We like families. We don't want, it looks odd because we're crossing out family, but we love families. But it, it really is problematic and has been problematic for us to streamline the actual process of people coming into the pool and the varied, between three, four, five or six family members. Three don't qualify for family, but four do. And so we actually have had some interpersonal relationship issues between families because of that. And so we think that this is going to be a more efficient use of our time for us and for those families.
Yes. Okay. All right. Next is the annual passes, our swimming lesson fees, playtime passports, the swim team and our Red Cross classes and adult fitness. We're sticking with all the fees that were previously approved. And then pool rentals, again, we're staying with the, what the previously approved rates. And we've, next, we're going to go into the comparisons. And so what you can see is that there's two, yellow and green. The first yellow and green is the 2025 and 2026 fees. And then the, the second one is the, shows just the 20% increase for the non-residents. So, and our drop-in swim fees, this is just for adults, where we kind of sit in the middle along with everyone else. So, yeah. And then swimming lessons, pretty much everyone is in the, kind of the same price point, but you can see the, the increase for the extra 20% on that one. And then the pool rentals, kind of the same thing, we, we stuck with what we're, what we've previously approved. We all have, we have seen an uptick in our pool and room rentals because we have, have them on Saturdays and Sundays. So, and before we didn't have Sundays, so. And those are pretty robust right now, so we're really happy to see that. And then Renee's going to take this.
So the next two slides that we're going to be showing you has our room rental and party package fees. These fees are hourly unless noted otherwise. The only fee we're requesting to change is our sport and fun party, and this adjustment will align better with our regular gym rental rate. On this slide are some more of our rental fees. Off-the-wall and indoor playground rentals are not scheduled to increase. We are requesting to increase our dance party rentals for 2026, however. These parties are two hours long and we provide a specialized instructor to lead the rental and, and teach the group a dance. So increasing this fee will help us recover our costs on that rental. And then Ballenger Park rental, half-day and full-day, this is a rental we have been offering for a little while, but we want to make sure it's added to our fee schedule because we did notice that it wasn't on there. And this is not the whole park, this is just the little grassy area behind the senior center for when people want to bring like the indoor-outdoor for their wedding reception or party. And that's all we're requesting there. And then I'll turn it over to Danielle.
Yep. These are the youth program fees. So the youth camps up top there. And then aqua, we have one aquatic camp, it's our Aqua Kids. And then the summer tennis team fee. These are our school year youth programs. And these are, this is the hourly rate. All of these programs though are actually, they're charged in a package and they're charged in a monthly rate, but this is what it is hourly. And so in blue there is what was approved for the school age already. Parents' Night Out, that is, that is a new, newer program. We, we were offering it all of last year and we're continuing to offer it, it's very popular.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if this is, man, I'm blind. I don't know if this is the right group, but youth programs and preschool in particular, any impact with the news coming out of the Ballmer group and ECAP? Are you familiar with that news? ECAP? No? Okay. So I will just put a pin in that and say, you might want to look at that, because I don't know what that's going to do, but ECAP, Early Childhood Education Assistance Program. Okay. So Steve Ballmer, the Ballmer group, they are pledging to fund it fully. News is breaking as we speak, so I think it was maybe last night announced or maybe this morning. But it's, it's a, it's a significant game changer for this age group. Not sure what that's going to do for our section, so might want to look into that.
Thank you. Yes, I will. Yeah. 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 Good. But the Parents' Night Out, I just wanted to make sure that that got added this year because it's, it's popular. So here is the scale. So this one is our, these are our preschool rates. And so in yellow, that is the monthly, that's the monthly rate, and that's for 2026. And the first line there in green would be the 10%, the increase, and then 20% and what that looks like. And then these are our school age rates, and this is the monthly fee.
We have a question here.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On back one slide, I'm just curious, oh, yeah, that's the slide. I'm just curious, what percentage of the kids that participate in childcare programs, kids crew are Mount Lake Terrace residents versus non-residents? And then if we were to go to the 20%, what kind of evaluation have we done as far as drop-off or change in?
Yeah.
How many people would participate?
Yeah. I honestly, I, I haven't looked at the percentage this year. I'm, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure. Usually historically, I think it's, it's probably been maybe 20% if I'm, maybe with Mount Lake Terrace residents? Is that correct?
The hard, the difficult part about it is that we have a childcare site, it depends if you're talking about childcare or before and after care. So for preschool or junior kids crew, definitely, I think your percentage is probably close.
Maybe around 20%.
But for the next slide, we talk about school age, that we have a site that is located in the City of Edmonds. So the Majerona K-8, and that's all non-residents with a few maybe sprinkled in.
That one clearly we, we know, because with the school age program, we have two Mount Lake Terrace schools and one that's in Edmonds. And so that one, you know, 33% of, you know, that one's all, 33% of our school age childcare, they are non-residents. So it also tells you that if we do that, then that particular school will be affected that way. They will get 20%, while the other two schools, they will maintain the Mount Lake Terrace
Okay. Next slide?
Yes.
We're in school age? Okay.
Here's our summer day camp. These are 2026 rates, this is an hourly rate. In blue, I don't know what those programs are for 2026, so that's their 2025 rates. So you can see where, where we are going to be, and that's what they have been. Here's our indoor playground. And so at the top with indoor playground, this is if they're going to come to our indoor playground and they have added it on with a swim. And then underneath that, those are our, well, per session, I guess, per lesson, the dance and our land and fitness fees. And so here is what the dance and land fitness, what a... And so here is what the dance and land fitness, what a per session. This one was, we, we are using, I believe it was the 60-minute rate here. And you can see the comparison there if it goes up 20% to 20%. So here we, this, this schedule at the top there, that's our open gym rate, and that's going to stay the same. Cardio room, we're adding the silver sneakers rate on. We just have not had that on in the past. And then field rentals, that all stays the same for next year. This schedule shows racquetball and our basketball, softball, volleyball leagues. And here is one comparison. It's our basketball league and how we compare. Here's volleyball and how we compare.
Okay, those were the comparisons. And so on to the, the program outlook. And this is just kind of a roundabout, I think, summary of what we've seen, I think, so far, and hopefully a lead into what we're seeing in '26. So recreation revenues are growing. We just got an update on our October revenues here yesterday. And so we are definitely seeing a lot of growth, and that can be attributed partially to being open more hours and, you know, expanding that kind of opportunity for room rentals and pool rentals and then expanded childcare classroom and having more kids in that class and expanded swim lessons. So definitely we're growing, and with that growth, we are getting close to eclipsing our full-time equivalents that we are allowed in the budget. And so in previous years, we've been, you know, we've had at least 10 more FTEs than we have now. And so that has shrunk since the pandemic when we didn't need those FTEs. We didn't have all the hours open that we do now. So due to that, you know, additional growth, especially to childcare and swim lessons, and those are revenue generating classes that we were able to recoup those expenses. We've talked about trying to put forth an agenda item later this year to request those additional FTEs, and then we could kind of show you that impact and what that would look like in a later date, not tonight, though. So timeline, we did go to Recreation Parks Advisory Commission on October 14th, and they reviewed and recommended the proposed fee schedule to council. And then we're here tonight to review that. And then next week would be, council is scheduled to adopt that proposed resolution. And then December 4th or thereabouts, that's not settled as of certainly at the agenda date where we could review future staffing. So that staff recommendation for next week would be that staff recommends approval of the resolution for Recreation and Park fee schedule. Do we have questions?
Councilmember Sandmore.
I'll just ask the elephant in the room, and I just wanted to hear what your discussions were behind it. For fee comparisons for public swim drop-in and fee comparison for swim lessons, Malibu Terrace is almost at the highest for 20% more for non-residents compared to Federal Way, which I think is at the, is at the Olympic pool. And so is it driving? Oh, it's not, oh.
Federal Way was the, their city pool.
Oh, okay.
King County is the, the Olympic pool.
Oh, thank you. I was just wondering if you're driving people to Linwood because Linwood for a drop-in has no different comparison to the resident and the non-resident rate. Let's say they're almost at seven, and ours is almost at 10. And then for swim lessons, it's the same thing. We're actually, it looks like maybe the highest compared to Federal Way. And so the only pool that's closest to us here is Linwood. And I'm just wondering, is that, as you said, you're coming back up, but is it actually going to drive people to Linwood? Because if I went to, if I was a non-resident, I would shop around a little bit.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Great comments and questions. That's one of the reasons, I may not have plainly said this, but why staff are not recommending that 20% difference. And so it's very difficult to recommend a 20% for a couple. That may make more sense, but to do a 20% across the board difference for resident, non-resident, this is one of the reasons, is that it drives us completely out of the market for non-residents. And as we've talked about before, Malibu Terrace residents make up the single largest group of our user base for the pool, but it still, there's 72% that are non-residents. So the single largest group, but, you know, by far, most of the users are non-residents, which has its merits either way to consider that, but it also has a large impact on buying down the cost for the residents to be able to utilize that facility. It's a numbers game. The more people we get through the pool, the better our cost recovery is. So definitely that was a consideration in, in staff recommending that we stick to that 10% discount rate, as you can see here, just how it prices us completely out of the region.
Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for being here. You know, it's one of my favorite topics of the year. No, I'm, I'm appreciative that the, the increases are mostly aligned with the six-to-five-year proposal. I think predictability is really helpful for residents in terms of future planning, so I appreciate that because I know we had some significant increases last year. I will argue the other side of it this year a little and just encourage our, you know, our PAC to think through, there's a lot of places where there's no increase this year despite the fact that we know that our costs are increasing year over year. So I know it's, it's a hard balance sometimes, but I would also encourage us, I, I as a consumer, and I think lots of our residents would rather have small incremental increases over time than not maybe have an increase for a couple of years and then have a bigger increase just because it's harder to plan for and fit into budgets sometimes. So I guess that would be my general feedback on budgets, but I appreciate, you know, I think all of the, the comparisons and the thought that went in here, and I particularly appreciate, because I know I've pushed pretty hard on this idea that we should be charging non-residents more than we charge residents. And so I appreciate the opportunity for us to look at those numbers and at least understand what those look like. And I do, I think some places it looks like it makes sense, and some places, I would argue, maybe it, what we're doing currently doesn't make sense, right? And so it sounds like it's 10% across the board right now. I guess I don't think we necessarily have to do it at this moment, but I would love to see part of the body of work this coming year be to really think through, like, how do we better reflect the market? Because, yes, the more people we get into any of these services, the more money, you know, the more revenue that we're bringing in, but there's also max capacity in a lot of these places. When we talk about childcare, when we talk about swim, we're filling up. There's more interest, there's more demand than we're able to meet. And because of that, you know, I, I think we should test the waters, right? And I think if we test them too far and we're seeing a quick drop off in people showing up, then, then we should readjust, right? But I, I do think we are missing an opportunity, particularly in a couple of these places where we are, especially like in childcare, where we are just so significantly below the market, which I'm a big fan for, doing that for our residents, and I think we should continue to hold those costs. But, but for non-residents, we are offering a service for a fee. And I think, yeah, exactly, that's, yes. So, you know, the, the fact that, you know, when you look at options around the, the region, and all of them are hard to get into, I will tell you, like, you get to a point as a parent where you're like, I will pay anything to, to have a place for my children to go. And, and by no means am I saying, like, I don't want us to be the highest fee in any of those places. Like, I love our neighboring communities and the folks that live there as well. But I, I do think that we should, we have an opportunity here because, again, we're not, we are subsidizing the overall parks and recreation budget from our general fund, right, which comes from our residents. And I really do think it's important that we find ways to, to utilize new revenue from, from non-residents, and I just, I think there's opportunity here. So I appreciate a lot the additional data. I would love to see maybe a proposal and some conversation this coming year about where do we make adjustments that are, you know, so it's not 10% across the board, right? Like, how do, how do we look at this in a way that really is more market-driven? So, but I'm, I'm cool with where things are. I appreciate all of the, the data. It's always super helpful and interesting to look through. And I just appreciate all of the cool new things that, that you're doing as well to bring in new revenue and new folks into, to the programs. I'm, I'm super excited every time I get a new email about the new, the new programs that, that you guys are doing. So thank you for all of, all of the care and hard work.
Did you, do you have something there? Oh. Councilmember Woodard. You can go first.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm not sure, you might go in a different direction, and mine's more about the fees. Thank you for the work, thank you for the conversation. And it sounds like, good lord, I am really going blind. It just actually hurts to even look in this direction if I don't have glasses on. My concern about the supply-demand conversation is we don't get into the complexity of who is that supply and who could afford to meet the demand, if you will. I might have that reversed, which is just my way of saying, I think we offer our residents a low-income discount, correct? Or some version? Does this stick with swimming lessons?
We have, we have a scholarship program for swim lessons and that kind of thing.
Does that apply to non-residents?
There is a donation-based Michelle Rengler Scholarship Fund that applies to Edmunds School District students.
Okay.
So not necessarily, that doesn't include only just residents for that program, but the budgeted scholarship program is just residents.
Okay. So I, I just want to keep this kind of economically based, which is, as we raise those fees, I think to myself, well, who's already priced out? And then one of the things about being lower on the scale is, well, maybe I can't afford it in my city, but I can in Malibu Terrace, if you will. So just making sure that we're keeping an eye on as we're raising it, we may still have the exact same number of people who wanting it, but if it starts to shade who those people are, I think we're responsible for that, or at least we should be aware of it. And I don't know if we're gathering that type of data right now, which is why I'm saying, well, we haven't raised it 10% or 20%, but it sounds like we're starting to want to pick and choose, which is not a bad thing. But again, I'd want to make sure that we recognize that that's going to change the makeup. May not change the N because there's no end to the number of N, but who those N are could change. And again, it's a very delicate balance, but again, because people are already priced out, but I don't want to further price people out in the name of us making just a little bit more cost recovery if there's a real change of who is using those services, right? And I don't know, again, how you could document that, but it just would be aware of it, please.
Okay, Councilmember, you're up, then, Walt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll echo both Councilmember Woodard and Murray's points. I guess one is, I think, capacity and understanding capacity and what, which programs are oversubscribed and, and who's not getting in, you know, and understanding the list of, the waiting list, I guess, if you will. Are they residents or non-residents? And figuring out how to get more residents into the programs if there's, if they're not able to get in because of capacity issues. And at the same time, you know, I, I, I think that absolutely applies to, you know, the swimming and some of the other recreational programs. And when it comes to the childcare programs, I have, I share the concerns about raising costs there just because recognizing the challenges of the cost of childcare programs overall. But then if we're looking at, and so trying to keep a cap on that as best as possible just to serve the South County region as a whole, but at the same time, if our residents are on that waiting list and not able to get into the childcare programs, and I think we do need to be looking real carefully at how to adjust those rates to be able to ensure our residents are able to get in and we're serving our residents in those programs. Anyway, otherwise, ditto. Thank you.
Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess maybe I want to just, I guess, name how I'm framing it in my mind because maybe that would be helpful for, for others from a contextual standpoint. I guess I look at the, the fees that we are charging as subsidized offerings, right? I mean, so we subsidize, we subsidize from the general fund. The goal is 20%. We've been at lower cost recovery in recent years with COVID. So, I mean, we subsidize somewhere in the range of 30, 40% of the, the, the cost of providing these services as a city from our general fund. So we are offering subsidized rates to folks who are not taxpayers in our community. And while I would love to do that, we're going to start having really hard conversations about budget, right? And so when we look at where there's opportunity, I think this is an opportunity, not that I want to charge people more for childcare. I have two children, I know how expensive it is, I know how hard it is, which is why I pushed back on the increases last year in the cost because I thought that they were too significant all at once. So I am by no means like, yay, let's charge people more money for childcare. But I do think we need to look at how we are subsidizing services for folks who are not residents of our community, and we need to at least take that into consideration when we're looking at our big financial picture. That's all. So I guess I do want to make sure that, for me, there's a distinction there. I'm not like, yay, let's charge people as much as, as the market will bear for, for childcare services. But I, I think we need to look at how much we're subsidizing services that don't go to our residents.
Yeah, just to address the overall comments, too, as you can see, there's only four entities listed in this chart. So there are more that provide childcare that we could probably try to gather to give us, you know, a more well-rounded look at that as well. But there have been a lot of child cares that have closed since COVID, a lot, and that's been a story repeated across the state. And one of the issues is that childcare costs are, as we know, climbing extremely quickly, and we are not keeping up with those, you can see. And there's some reasons for that, too. And some of that is the overall feel and thought of what council has told us, they do not want childcare rates to increase. If that's wrong, then we're more than happy to increase them. And so I think that's, if that's an opportunity for us to look at that, we can do that. I'm really, was Leary also bringing something to you that we just increased 20% on last year? So trying to keep those rates static for a year, I thought would be a decent approach to the staff that we, how we spoke about that. But, you know, we definitely need to take an overall look at the cost recovery model and what is being programmed. And I think that we have some opportunity to do that, you know, coming up. And so this may be one of the more targeted areas that we need to take a look at.
And we, we have a childcare center coming into the city and probably, hopefully find out what they're going to be charging because they were supposed to be a not-so-high priced. So anyways, I know that no matter what we do, childcare is going to be a, a big problem with, there, there's not enough, let's put it that way. All right, so what we're doing is, go ahead.
Sorry, I know it's going to just prolong the night, but I think you just made a wonderful point but didn't really show what, what this council can do. Let's back up. We don't get to just say we have a new childcare coming in. We had to change policy to make sure that childcare center could come in if we're talking the same one, so anybody can correct me if I'm off track here, if this is the one that's over by the Safeway. So just reminding us, as much as I appreciate the policies, excuse me, the, the cost recovering and all that, the part that we get to do is that. And so if you're not familiar with that on this side of the table, I would encourage us to have that backdrop because they almost weren't able to open, and they are committed to being low-income, to serving low-income students, but the policy did not match. And I will give credit to our city manager for figuring out that policy that didn't unravel all the other spaces for folks who don't remember how that was unraveling, because you don't get to just go, I'm going to change this number over here. It changes it everywhere, and those have implications. And I will just say, for every lamb you're trying to save, there's a wolf, watch it. Go on, yeah, come on, let's do it. Which is just to say we found a way in which to keep wolves outside but to serve the lambs on the inside. So I do want to acknowledge that, as you just pointed it out. But again, that history gets lost, but this council made that decision for that space to be able to open.
So just, just so that I know what we're doing. We're going to be doing the 20%. We're doing this, so this is just a recommendation tonight.
Yeah, the fee schedule shows a 10% difference.
All right, any other questions? Okay. We still have another fee schedule and then the financial report yet to do tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks, Mayor. As we all get situated here, I think what I'd recommend is that we do the next fee schedule, which Rich has assured me will take about five minutes on his end. And, and, and following that, we'll take a, a couple-minute break before we move on to the next item.
Okay. Does, does that mean there's no more questions?
No questions.
No questions.
All right, so next is the fee schedule for adopting engineering with our city engineer, Rich Meredith.
Thank you, everybody. I hope this will be brief, but we have, we're building on some of the work that Matthew, our city building official, has been doing, and Lucas Kratt, our development review engineer up in engineering. The two of them have been working to find ways to be more efficient and streamline our process. So with that work, we've been able to determine that keeping the review fee the same in 2026 will work. We're still trying to find some more efficiency, so who knows what will happen in 2027. So our fees will remain the same. The only one that we're proposing to raise is our utility connection fee. That's where we actually physically have to go make the connections. And so we were proposing a cost of living increase on that, using the construction cost index that we'd used for our traffic impact fees and our parks, I think it was our parks fees for when we're doing construction. There's a, I think I have an error in the staff report where I said the Seattle CPI, but we actually mean the Seattle Construction Index. So I'll make that correction for next week. So those are really, all we're changing is the cost of living for the connection fees on that, and the rest will remain the same.
Okay, that was a simple report. Are there any questions? I don't see any other hands going up, so you did keep it under five minutes.
Thank you very much.
And now we're taking a five-minute break or a three-minute break? 8:58, okay.
8:57.
All right.
Yeah, you can't rely on these clocks.
That's true. That's right. It's, oh, well, it's actually correct this time.
Better than it's been, for sure.
So we'll be taking a few-minute break, and we'll be back at 8:58.
We're back in session. And now our next presenter is going to be presenting on the third quarter financial report with our finance director, Sircase Salaman, and financial technician, Caitlin Renkey. I hope I got them right. No, what? No, you're not. I wonder. When did you get that name?
When did you get that name?
I'm just reading this. Finance team. Yes, I know. I was reading it and looking at him going, wow.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pertam and council members. Today, we will be presenting, I shouldn't say "we," Artist Nammadi will be presenting the third quarter financials. And so he'll be going fund-by-fund and letting you know what the budget to actuals is.
All right, so numbers on the general fund are probably the smallest, because it's the largest fund and had a lot of information to put it in. But I just want to walk you through a little bit about how to read these slides. They're all going to look relatively the same in terms of layout. So the year-to-date actual column is going to be through the end of September, which is the end of the third quarter. The adopted budget is the budget as adopted, and the percentage of budget shows you how much of that budget either has been collected or been used, depending where we're looking at revenues or expenses. 75% would be three-quarters of the year, so if there's something that is, comes in or goes out at an even rate, that'd be around the number we'd be expecting. Not everything works like that, including the first item on the list, which is property taxes. And we will go through any variances that we saw as we were going through it, and take any questions that you have. So first, we have the general fund. Our first item we'd like to point out for you here is that we're at 54% of the budget for property taxes. Historically, we've received our largest collections for property taxes in May and November. That's when the city actually receives those amounts. And on the next slide, we'll actually go through a little bit of that to show you how that looks. We also wanted to point out that we are only at 49% of our budget for gambling taxes. We did have a bankruptcy for a local casino. We have actually, since the end of the third quarter, we've actually gotten a few third-quarter collections from that bankrupt casino group, so there is some trickling. We don't know whether it will end up being at the end of the year because of that, because they apparently do have some locations that are still having revenue. Our other low item here, we had 49% for development service fees. These are the permits and other CED items that are just coming in lower than forecasted. And then moving down into the expenditures, we did have a large amount in capital outlays that wasn't reflected in the adopted budget. This was from the ARPA funds that were approved in prior period and are being spent in this period. And then finally, you're actually going to see this on all the slides, pretty much that have transfers. The transfers have not physically been entered into the system for the year. We're going to be doing that in quarter four, and it'll be after the budget amendments that'll be proposed at the second presentation tonight from finance.
Mayor Pertam Wal, if you have a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, you know, the property taxes, we knew, so that one should even out. And then the gambling, we were aware of. I'm just interested in development service fees, what's happening, I guess? I mean, is that just timing? Are we seeing an uptick in the last quarter that might, how close are we going to get in the last, the last quarter to be able to make up for that? How much of that is an ongoing issue? Obviously, part of it's economic and just recognizing various challenges in the economy, but we're also still hoping for more development in, particularly the town center, et cetera, going, moving forward. Just love to get a little more information on what we're seeing, what we're, what we're expecting. You know, so we adopted a two-year budget. Is this something that's likely to go into next year, and we're going to need to consider, make, you know, some adjustments or recognize that we're going to be shorter than we had expected, potentially two, almost $2 million going into next year's budget as well?
So I think what a lot of it has to do with is the uncertainty in the capital markets. So some of the larger projects that we were anticipating, you know, we've talked to several developers about that, and it's, you know, unable to secure financing because financing sources are nervous about investing. So we're continuing to work with our developers about that issue, and we're paying very close attention to that number so that we can adjust as we need to. We still have projects that we expect to come over the next year or so, but it depends on the economic, you know, the overall national, global economic environment that we're in at the moment. There was a lot of interest, you know, a lot of uptick during the last rate cut, Fed rate cut, and then that kind of dwindled away, I want to say slowly, but it was actually, you know, over a month or so, where the inflation kept rising. So people are nervous about investing in these projects. We've also heard from several different developers that the backlog of projects that were planned and are already entitled have been purchased. So now investment is looking for new projects to invest in, instead of ones that are already fully completed. So that backlog being cleared out, we think will help, but we're definitely paying attention to this revenue number.
Thank you. So looking at next year, are we, where do we think we're going to land, and how short potentially are we going to be in next year's budget?
Yeah. I think this quarter and the first quarter of 2026 are really going to tell the tale, so we'll be able to adjust before we run into major problems.
Well, that slide came up all at once. That's fine. Basically, this is what I was talking about on the previous slide, just going through a little bit and showing council how our property taxes come in, that we collect 41% to 41%, 4% of our property taxes and re-taxes within the first fourth, within the fourth quarter, and that the amounts that we've collected now, 54% of our property taxes and 63% of our REITs, are kind of in line with that. And I think if you press once, we'll get a little graph. There we are. That shows our comparisons between the current year. The blue is 2023, green is 2024. And yeah, if we actually go to the next slide, it'll be, just go ahead and press one more time. There we are. It's a little bit larger blown-up of that graph, just to show you the decline in the sales tax and REIT that came about 2023 to 2024. That drop is when we, South County Fighter was broken off from the city. All right. Moving on past that into the next fund, we're into the recreation fund. And as I mentioned earlier, point B there is transfers will be performed in the fourth quarter. You're going to see that across all the slides where we have that. The major item we wanted to point out here was that we were at 50% of the budget for aquatics revenue. This was mostly due to the pool closures for maintenance, causing lower than forecasted. Street operating are points that we wanted to point out here, the fuel tax and ESSB 5987 revenues, those are state-shared revenues. So our budgets for those, what we adopt, is based off what the state sends us. They give us our estimates, and our actuals are what we're actually receiving. So that is where the variance is pretty much coming from. That's, that is just what we have received from the state on those items. Moving on to our internal fleet fund. What the variance is here that we wanted to point out was reimbursements from other governments, was at 43%. These are the fleet reimbursements from the City of Shoreline, when they have repairs done at our facility. They, what we see here is just what they have actually used during the year. And then item B is down on capital outlays. The budget includes replacement costs for future years' expenditures. That's included in this budget, so the $225,000 outlay is just what we've actually spent this year. Now onto one of our smaller funds, the hotel motel tax fund. We have one note here on the services, because we have zero spent for the fund. That's because any invoices from LTAC recipients have not been received yet. For debt service, the remaining scheduled debt payments are to be dispersed in fourth quarter. They actually happen pretty early in December, and they will bring us up pretty much to where the budget is. For the rest of the general operating funds, we've combined two onto each slide, just because they're smaller in activity and scope. The housing needs fund is displayed at the top, and the solid waste fund, we have one note here, that the expenditures in that are for solid waste exemptions to lower-income households based upon applications. So we're at 95%, but that's just because of the applications that have been come in and been able to be approved. The strategic reserve fund will have transfers performed to it in fourth quarter, and the accumulated leave is presented here at the bottom. Moving on to the real estate excise tax fund, this fund only receives money for those two REITs that we talked about previously, and the only expenditures are when it sends money out to the other funds to be used in the required purposes, and that, those transfers to those funds will be done next quarter. Street construction fund, we did want to point out down at the bottom, the expenditures and uses, what projects were being done. So that $2.5 million is being done with mostly Main Street reconstruction, 6th Avenue repaving, adaptive signals, and street signs. That's the projects that have been being used. Capital improvements. The first item, note, the impact fees that are assessed based on incoming development, much like in the general fund, and you'll see in some of the enterprise funds, those numbers have just been lower than they were forecasted. Transfers will be done in fourth quarter, and then major projects for this fund that make up that $6 million, $6.5 million is the transit connection corridor, police roof, HVAC and generator, and the balancer viewing platform and trails. That's what we've been spending money on in this year. Going quickly into our utility funds, this is the stormwater that we started first. Our first note down here is at point A on services. The largest component of that is the city utility tax, which is tied directly to the service revenues, reimbursements for the general fund for administration, and then charges to the fleet fund. Go ahead to the next. Then the sewer utility fund, we have the capital facility charges at point A, which is what we wanted to bring to attention, is that just basically, those are directly associated with development of activity in the city. Those are basically their fees to developers. And that we do have room, because we won't spend 2% of our capital outlays budget in the sewer. Those capital projects you'll be seeing in the next presentation are moving into the 26 budget. That same thing is happening at water utilities, which is point C here. We have our capital facility charges, same as in the previous fund and other areas where that has been lower than forecasted. And then we did have a drawdown for the loan proceeds that, based on how the budget is written, was budgeted in prior years, and it just had needs in this year, and that was one of the items that we had at the last meeting that we had, where those loan proceeds were not drawn down. They were drawn down this year when we actually had more activity on that project. And I'd like to open up to the council for any questions they have.
Any questions, comments? Mayor Pertam Wal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great report, thank you. And I really appreciate the way this was laid out, actually. This is way better than we've had for a very long time. And this is, so thank you. This is what, I, this is in presentation form, this is exactly what I've been asking, I've been wanting us to have for finance committee in, like, spreadsheet form, but on a, so on a monthly basis, if we, once we can get to that point, I'd like to have these, this same information for finance committee to be able to review and understand where we're at, just on an ongoing basis. But this is very well laid out, very understandable as to where we are, where we stand, and I think it makes perfect sense. So well done. Thank you.
Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know that you can answer this, so somebody can probably answer this. Looking back at the fleet budget, under governments, if I'm following that right, we've only made 43% of what we were expecting to make, because in this particular case, Shoreline has not been offering opportunities to be charged. How about that as a way to say that? Is there capacity to reach to other cities? I mean, I guess, where do we make that up? Because I presume that we need that other 57%, right? But that's not ours. They're not bringing them. Are we going to go find somebody else, or how does that work?
Yeah, we are looking, we're always looking for partnerships to more fully utilize our assets. It's easy for me to say. As far as what Shoreline brings to us, this is what we expected, is kind of like, year over, year over year, we increase it. They haven't done as much this year, but we're paying attention to that, but we're also actively looking for other partnerships.
And I did actually look at the collections. And I, I did actually look at the collections through October. There were two larger invoices. It's just, it's not consistent year to year, month to month. So, we did, we did get more than that in October, but it's, I don't, you know, I don't know whether it will reach the 100% that we have listed here.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other hands going up.
Thank you much.
Next section. I thought there were 100.
Yeah, that's the next one.
All right. Thank you. So, next is the review of the biennial budget amendment. Or am I on the wrong one? No, I am on the right one. Okay, we'll move on to the 2025 budget amendment. Caitlin Rinkie, she will be assisting me with the presentation. So, the city has a biennial budget, and we are required to do a mid-biennial review. I have to mention this because we are numbers people, and we looked at this clip art, and we thought, this is perfect. We've got 2025 budget and 2026, and we never read what was underneath it. So, that you might want to look at in about a month and a half. All right.
Our agenda is the council goals, and then this budget summary, fund updates, and then the budget amendment summary at the end. Our council goals, these adjustments highlight the city's dedication to responsible, responsibility, managing, responsibly managing public funds, maintaining essential services, and supporting long-term strategic goals.
Okay, so, this budget amendment includes modifications to the beginning fund balance. The original budget was prepared before the year-end close, and the final beginning balance had not been finalized. Also, another factor for the changes is that the books were not closed and balanced for a few years, and now we have the actual beginning balances. And also, last month, council approved updates to the funds, and so, this budget amendment is moves funds, transfers money to the other funds, so it technically does not change any budget dollar amount. It's just moving the money. And then, we have changes to the capital funds. We have some of the capital projects that were not completed in 2025 and have been moved to 2026. So, and then, again, the updating funds, we have construction funds that we are utilizing, and there are a lot of movements within this budget amendment. There are going to be a lot of numbers. I have, I have to say that some of these are more for us so that we can keep it straight once we put the new budget into the system. But I'll try to go over them and summarize as best as I can. So, here you'll see the beginning fund balance. You'll see these on, almost all of them, I think. The beginning fund balance did change. It did go down in the General Fund. I think we've discussed this before. There is a transfer, so the expenditures, the first, maybe I should explain in this, I think, I've looked at this so much, but the very first column is the original budget. You have the beginning balance, revenues, expenditures, and the ending balance. And the next column is the budget amendment, changes to whether it's revenues, expenditures, or both. And then, the revised column has all of it on there. And you'll see the ending fund balance down in the lower right-hand corner. So, just, just let me know if you have questions on these. The first one, we're voiding the transfer to capital improvement funds. And the next one is a transfer, we're, we're, let's see, expenditures. I'm even getting confused with these. It's late. The capital projects were included in what is now the Parks Capital Improvement Fund. The $145,000, the funds are better utilized in the Capital Improvement Fund, so we're avoiding it to this Street Construction Fund. And when you see kind of a negative and a positive, it just kind of works out. We have to add it in there to make the numbers work. So, you know, if you have questions on them, feel free to ask. $330,000, we have the new opioid settlement fund, and we're just moving money to that fund so that we can manage it better. It's restricted funds, and it'll be more transparent. And the last one is, you'll find out about this in a few slides. It's to move money to the Art Fund. It's the 1% for the arts, and we're moving that from the General Fund where it was initially received in.
These first group of funds are being moved from special revenues to the general funds, starting with zeros, moving them from ones that start with one. And the majority of these are just beginning fund balances that are changing, so we're just going to kind of clip through them, and I'll note if there's any other changes besides beginning fund balances. Beginning fund balance is the only change in this. And accumulated leave, same with the, accumulated leave, just the beginning fund balance change. Same with the rec in 2025 is the only change, is our beginning fund balance. Solid waste, it's just the beginning fund balance as well. The Street Operating Fund is the beginning fund balance, as well as the TBD license fees are being moved from the Street Construction Fund to this fund. The Art Fund was not approved in the, or was not included in the original budget, so we are just moving the funds from the General Fund. And then, the expenditure is going to be the transit quarter project. The Tree Fund is the same. It was not included in the original budget, so we're just adding those revenues, and the expenditures will be the tree mitigation project. This is the remainder of ARPA funds in the ARPA budget. It will be transferred to the Facilities Fund. This is the opioid settlement that we've moved into its own fund so we can track it for transparency. The Hotel Motel is just the beginning fund balance changing. Debt Service, it's just the beginning fund balance changing.
Okay, the Street Construction Fund, you'll see some of these same numbers because they're just moving from one area to the other. So, Caitlin already talked about the TBD license fees, and they are, will not be in the Street Construction Fund. They will be in the Street Operating Fund. The two transfers are, are not needed, and so, or they're transferred, the first one is not needed, and the second one is transferred from the General Fund to Parks Capital instead of into the Street Construction. And moving down to the expenditures, capital projects are moved to 2026. This was the original budget, so it lowers the expenditure. The next one, the $4 million additional, we're adding additional funding for the Main Street project. And then, the $2,000 is just a movement of the debt payments to a new debt service Parks Capital Improvement, I know there are a lot of numbers. The miscellaneous revenues, about $1.5 million is a grant for the Plaza Project, and there are other, other changes that are several items that we did another revenue forecast on, which increased the revenue amount. It was just easier to add them together for the sake of room on the, on the slide. $970,000 is a Federal Highway Grant, and that we're expecting to receive in 2026. And the $500,000, Facilities and Parks Capital Projects were in one fund, and now these funds have been separated. And the $150,000, the project was moved to the General Fund since it is not considered a capital project, so the expenditure will come out of the General Fund also, and not out of the Parks Capital Improvement Fund. Then, we have the $550,000, Facilities and Parks Capital Projects were in one fund, and these were separated. Going down to the expenditures, there is an increase to the Ballenger Park Trails, and the next one is we move projects to Facilities. And also, the next, next one is the same. We moved projects to the Facilities Construction Fund. And the very last one is a reduction in capital projects, the Evergreen Playfield. And for the REIT, we avoided a couple transfers and added one that is to the Facilities Construction Usually, when we void a transfer, that means we're, it's not needed in that fund. So, this shows the transfers we talked about in other slides, so I'm not going to go over all of these. But there is a grant, the $90,000 grant that I know we've talked about before for the EV charging stations. There are some, the special revenue fund at the top that is some funding for the, from the Fire Department for the police generators. And then, there's the transfer from CIP, the $1.3 million for the police roof, and the, the, these are all revenues. And then, the transfer that Caitlin talked about, the transfer from the ARPA funds. Then, moving down to the expenditures, the pool liner was originally in the 2026 budget, and we had to do that this year. And also, the, the next one's police generator, clubhouse, HVAC, and the police roof and EV charging stations are all expenditures for this year. The Sewer Utility Fund, this is the operating fund, and we are moving, the capital projects used to be in the operating fund, and we, they, it has its own fund now, so we're moving projects to the capital fund. And the $3.5 million is a project moved to, projects moved to 2026, and the rest are debt payments, and those are into the new debt service funds. And Water Utility, this is the same, exact same thing, except it's, the capital projects are moved into a water construction fund, and some of the projects are moved to 2026, and all the rest of it are debt service payments that are moved to the new funds that were approved by council last month. Stormwater, exact same thing, move in capital projects to a stormwater construction fund, and then, capital projects move to 2026, and the rest are debt service, moved to the new debt service funds.
These are the construction funds that Cirque was just talking about. So, this first one is stormwater construction, so you'll see the revenue moved in from storm ops, and then the expenditures are 220th water quality and the deep pipe repair. Sewer construction, you'll see the revenues moved from sewer ops, and then, the expenditures are the Cedar Grove and Edmunds Water Waste Treatment Plant. And then, the Water Construction Fund is the, moved from water ops, and the expenditures are wastewater main and reservoir recoding and systemic retrofit. And then, these are, are debt, the debt service ones that we did. This is a revenue bond. So, we've separated from the appropriate utilities, and then, the expenditure is the debt service And this is a revenue reserve, so you'll just see the water or the money coming in from the correct utilities and no expenditure. This is an existing bond that you'll see moved from, the revenues moved from the correct utilities, and the expenditure is the debt payment. This is a 2020 revenue bond, again, revenues from the appropriate utilities, and the expenditure is the debt payment. This is a Public Works Trust Fund loan, and again, transfer in from water, and then, the debt service payment is your expenditure. And this is a Public Works loan also, again, just separated from the ops fund, and the only expenditure will be the interest payment this year.
So, this is the budget amendment summary, and I know you're familiar with this when we do our regular budget. The difference in this is the very first part, general operating funds. We used to call it the general governmental funds, but these really are operating funds. And you'll see there are a few more, the Art Fund, Tree Fund we've added, and the Information Technology Fund that used to be in the General Fund. The next section is the utility funds, and the additional part is the debt service funds that we now have all the new funds. And then, the capital funds, we've added to that so that we can separate all the construction funds from the operating funds to make it more transparent and easier to manage. And so, kind of to summarize 2025, is the beginning balances were 4.7 million more than the forecast, than the forecasted amount in the original adopted budget. And then, we had all the transfers to the new funds, and those don't have any financial impact, just movement of funds. And the, several of the capital funds were moved to 2026, so this resulted in a lot higher ending fund balance in 2025. And we are required to have a public hearing, and that is set for next week, next Thursday, November 20th. And following that, there will be a vote on, on the budget amendment. And before we move on to 2026, if you have any questions on the 2025 amendments.
Are there any questions, comments? Okay, we'll go on to the 2020. Oh, you're going to wait? Okay. ARPA. There's still that one little section of ARPA left.
Okay, I'm going to skip some of the, some of the first few slides are exactly the same. So, again, we're wishing you a Happy New Year. Okay, we'll start with the General Fund. Some of these carryovers from the beginning fund balance, they'll carry throughout the 26. So, the first one, the expenditures, we're, we're actually avoiding the transfer to the Street Construction Fund, and we are adding a transfer to the Recreation Fund.
The Housing Needs, a lot of these are the same as they were in 2025. It's just the beginning fund balance change. So, I'll note any other differences besides the beginning fund balance. Housing Needs, it's just the beginning fund. Same with Strategic Reserve. The accumulated leave, it's just the beginning fund balance. Rec, it's the beginning fund balance, and the transfer that Cirque just mentioned from the General Fund. Solid waste, it is just the beginning fund balance. Street Fund is just the beginning fund balance again. Art Fund, we're adding it to, since it wasn't included in the original budget. Tree Fund is also not included in the original budget, so we're just adding it. The opioid settlement fund, these are the funds we're expected to receive in 2026. And then, we've got an expenditure for the Scout Program, which is the embedded social worker program for PD. Hotel Motel, it is just the beginning fund balance. Debt Service, beginning fund balance also.
Okay, the Street Construction Fund, you'll see that void that I talked about earlier is the very first one in the revenues. is the very first one in the revenues. The expenditures, the first item, the nine million is the original budget from the capital projects, for capital projects. And then the next one is added expenditure for the Main Street and the asphalt overlay. And the 2.4 million is the utility portion of the Main Street project that should be recorded in the utility construction fund, so that's just moved over. And then we have the debt payment, another transfer to the debt payment fund. Parks Capital, the miscellaneous revenue is actually of federal highway grant and several RCO grants in that five point, 1.5 million. And then there's a transfer from REIT. The expenditures, that was just a transfer to the Facilities Construction Fund instead of this fund for the library roof. And the REIT in the expenditures, we have a transfer to the Parks Capital Fund and then there's 100,000 transferred to the Facilities Construction. The two, the, the two grants are possible, possible federal and state appropriations for the library. And then there is the transfer that I just talked about from REIT and then the expenditure is the library roof. The sewer, is that yours?
Yep.
Mine? Okay. Sewer utility fund, there were trans-
Commander Mayor, I'm just, I'm curious on the budget amendment for the library, back to slide, there you go. The 300,000 is from the state grant that we received in 25, right? No, are we, we're hoping, we're hoping to get?
Correct. So last year, from the legislature, we asked for 800. We were awarded 500 and this year, our, our, one of our priorities is to ask for the additional reward.
So I guess I'm, and then we all know what's going on at the federal level, which we don't need to expand upon here. My only question is, recognizing both the challenges, the fiscal challenges at the federal and state level, should we be doing the budget amendment for these two items now or should we be waiting until they actually transpire?
So my recommendation is that we do them now and the reason for that is if we don't get the grants, then we won't do the project, right? This gives us the authority without going to another budget amendment before we start the bidding process and everything else. It just, it's a step that we can take that won't cause any harm if we're, if we don't secure the, the funding. Because if we don't get it, we're not doing the project anyway.
Okay, fair enough. But then, if we don't get the funding, then we'll need to do another budget amendment at the end of next year.
Yeah, so, well, and we'll have to anyway. So my philosophy on budget amendments, I'd rather do one big one so council can look at it holistically and it's more transparent way to do it than I would do, you know, one a month or one every other month to adjust all these things. So that's the reason for this and we'll, we'll have to do a budget amendment regardless of what happens with this particular project.
Okay, the sewer operating fund, so we are moving the capital projects to the capital, capital fund, sewer construction fund. So the first two items are, are those and then, which creates a reduction in the expenditures in, in the operating fund and the rest of them are just the debt payments into the new debt funds. The exact same thing with the water utility fund, just like in 2025, we're moving the capital projects to the capital, the construction funds. And water portion of Main Street capital project is now moved, will be moved to the water, the water portion of the Main Street capital project. And the rest are, let's see, the 2.5 million is also a move to the capital, capital construction funds, a lot of moving money here. And the debt service, rest of it is the debt service to the new funds. Same with the storm, moved to the capital construction fund and I think both of the transferred to the capital projects and then the rest are the debt service. And this is the same for the, are you?
Yes, me. That's you. These are the construction funds that Sir Kay was just referencing. Those will be the transfers from storm ops and then the same project as was 2025, the only addition to this one is the stormwater portion of the Main Street capital project. Sewer construction, it's the same thing, the expenditures from the sewer operations and then the continued projects from 2025 and then the sewer portion of Main Street Water, it's the same thing also, move in from the water ops fund and then continuing 2025 projects and then this is the water portion of the Main Street capital project. These are the debt services again, this is revenue bond and all we're doing is changing, we've separated the debt services from the appropriate utilities and making the debt service payments. This one is just revenue reserve, so you'll just see the money going in, no money going out. The existing revenue bond, separating from you, the appropriate utilities and making our debt service payment. Also, an existing 2020 revenue bond, transferring money from the existing ops, correct ops funds and making our debt service payments. Specific, public works trust fund loan, money going in from the water fund and making our debt service payment. Public works loan also, separating from the appropriate utility funds and making our debt service payment.
And so this is the summary for 2026. And so we have transfers to the new funds and several of the capital projects were included in this 2026 budget. And then the ending fund balance for 2026 is approximately 206,000 higher than the original adopted budget. So I think that kind of shows that the city has been, I think, good stewards of public funds and we're making sure that we're watching what, what we spend money on and that, like I said, good stewards of the public funds. We do have again, the public hearing next week and then there will be a vote after that.
I don't see any hands going up, but I do know that Mayor Potem has a few questions.
Well, no questions, just other than the ones I already asked during the presentation, just some general statements. So basically, we just had 81 slides to summarize the budget amendment ordinance, which is four pages. So I point that out because really what this is about is transparency. I mean, that was, we went into a lot of detail to be transparent about what we're doing because if you look at the budget amendment ordinance and the four pages of, of what we're actually doing, it's not clear as to what we're doing or why, whereas what you've laid out here in, in the slide presentation is very clear. And I, so, so thank you first of all for the transparency. Second thing I want to point out is, you know, this is a lot more budget amendments than we normally do, but primarily because of changing the funds that we did during our couple meetings ago. So a lot of, that, by, by changing the funds that we did, you know, a few meetings ago, that created the need to change a whole lot of things in the budget that really have very little budgetary impact, so much as just showing how we're transferring funds that will be more clear in the future, which is the whole reason we did that, right? So in the future, it'll be much more clear. The main differences i- in the budget is in the beginning and ending fund balances, which I want to highlight briefly, but notably, how much work the finance team has put in in cleaning up some challenges that we found over the last few, several years, previous years to get us to where we are. And I'm not gonna be able to, especially considering the hour, expand upon how, emphasize, I guess, how important that work was that went into getting us to where we are and putting us, we're, you know, getting, making the changes on the beginning and ending fund balances. But that was, the finance team has gone through that and the finance committee, I guess, has been, you've been reporting regularly and I just want to share with the rest of the council and the public how, what a debt of gratitude we owe to you and the finance team for getting us to where we are, to be able to clean everything up and be able to be as transparent as we are, to be able to understand the, the hard decisions, the challenging decisions we're gonna have ahead of us with the budget. But this is gonna be much easier to understand based on what, the work that you've done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Woodard?
For fear of us gonna go longer. Anyway, let me also give a plug as well. This portion is amazing, but the real proof is in front of the auditors. So just a reminder that the council, that the council's invited to sit in on those exit interviews and thankfully, the work both prior and now and moving forward has kept those meetings pretty tight. So it's not a lot of time, but it's a real opportunity to hear from the state's perspective how impressive the work that we're doing and they haven't seen this yet and they'll be that much more pleased. There's actually two opportunities to do that for each of these, but just kind of putting that plug, that the end of that process, when you really see this, is when you're in front of those state auditors and it's a very cordial conversation, at least it's been so far and I imagine it'd be even quicker next time. So thoughtful, but it's because of the transparency and the tracking that this also allows to bring the auditor side back in. So thank you all for that amazing work.
Thank you, but we have one more section left. And that is the review ordinance adopting property tax levy.
Thank you, Mayor. I think before we start, if we could have an extension probably to 10:30, just, just to make sure, I don't think we'll use all, well, don't think we'll use all of that time, but just to have it.
Mayor Potem Wall?
Thank you, Commander Mayor. Move to extend the meeting until 10:30.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We don't need to use all of it, but we are extending until 10:30.
Almost feel like I should say good morning. Okay, so this is the 2026, it's the 2025 property tax levy and the amount to be collected in 2026. So we'll go over, and I, trust me, this is not 81 slides, it's a lot, lot shorter. So we'll be going over the allocations and how your property tax is split in the separate taxing districts. And we'll look at the typical levy rates in the cities in Snohomish County and the Mount Lake Terrace assessed value over time and the average value of a residence in Snohomish County. And the total, typical total property tax based on the average value and a typical levy rate and then levy options. So this is the annual property tax levy and we are required to hold a public hearing for a possible increase to the property tax and our public hearing is set for November 20th. The city is allowed to increase the property tax by the IPD, the implicit price deflator or 1%, so whichever is lower. And this year, the 1% is lower as the IPD is 2.44%. The IPD, the implicit price deflator is just another measure of inflation. The total assessed value is 5.4 billion and the new construction assessed value is 16.8
This graph shows Snohomish County distribution of taxes in 2025. The total property taxes was, property, property taxes were 1.8 billion. Note that schools get almost 36% of this, state schools get a little bit more than 28% and fire districts get almost 13 while we only get 7.79. This is the typical levy rate by city and unincorporated, the average is 8.1, 8.01. Mount Lake Terrace is 7.95, putting us just below the average. This is total taxable assessed value between 2013 and 2026. The assessed value was 4.35% higher than last year, this shows us staying steady the last four years. 2025 average resident value for Snohomish County cities, this shows us at the high end of middle, we are at about, we are at 500,000, 591,400, it's late for me too. 2025 typical total property tax paid per average resident for Snohomish County cities, Mount Lake Terrace is $4,707, this shows us at the lower end of the middle. 2025 typical levy rate per resident for Snohomish County cities, Mount Lake Terrace is $7.96, this also shows us at the lower end of the middle. The general operating levy options for 2026, this shows with and without the levy, the 1% will increase by 33,235 or an average of $2.84 per home. The staff recommendation is we have, we're required to have a public hearing and a vote, which will happen on November 20th, next week.
That's it?
We did it in five.
Okay.
Does anyone have anything to say or to add?
I, I just want to say that was 117 slides with all three presentations.
Thank you for doing that, though.
I've never gone through, it's so fast, but for the sake of time.
Okay, so we're, we're done with the financing. Wow.
For tonight.
Yes, for tonight.
Do we have to go through all 817?
No, not next time.
Next Thursday.
No, we'll just do a really brief, yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so then next is city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two things to mention tonight. First is wanting to let council know that the Recreation and Conservation Office, RCO, has agreed to fund the Upper Veterans Plateau project to the tune of 1.3 million. So that was, that was a very nice announcement we got earlier this week and that comes from the Land and Water Conservation Fund, so very happy to see that. Secondly, the holiday tree will be assembled on November 26th, weather permitting, so looking forward to the tree lighting this year, getting that ready to go. And that's all I have for you this evening, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments? Okay, so next is the review of the November 20th agenda and that's, looks like it's gonna be a long one too.
It will be, but I don't think quite as long as this one.
Okay.
But we'll see.
And city council comments, any city council comments, councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Since we have 35 minutes, let me pull some stuff out. No, I'm kidding. No, totally kidding. Just one, which is the city manager review, thank you. My understanding, I talk with the, I didn't talk with, I got an update from the consultant, man, it really is late, from the consultant, which is to say, we're almost there, so for the two who have anything missing, if you can connect with the consultant, great, if you cannot, if I can help facilitate any aspect of that, please let me know. Outside of that, I guess we would have to decide as a council if we're not able to and we want to stick with the timeline- and we want to stick with the timeline, which the dates have been forwarded to you, so I don't think I feel we need to repeat those, we'd have to decide if we need to stall, if we want to make sure that all seven of us have our say. But hoping that time is still on our side, it is finite, but there's still time to get in front of the consultant. And I know that that person is doing their best to reach to the two who are outstanding at this point. So thank you for what you have done and hopefully we can close this out and have a thoughtful process.
So the two dates that we were giving are still the two dates?
Yes, so we changed the dates, but they do exist, so please.
Yeah, November 19th, which is six days from now. And then the second one remains December 8th. Yep.
So those are the two days I have in my calendar. Okay, good. All right, anyone else? Councilmember Murray?
Briefly, just because we extended the meeting and, you know, we've got, I was gonna say, it would be a shame to stop before 10 o'clock with that. No, I wanted to circle back to the comment earlier about safety because it's something that actually has been on my mind a lot as well, given all of the conversation about it this year. It does feel like there's maybe an opportunity for us to, to talk about that as a community and to try to find a space to, I think we got really good input as part of the diversity, equity and inclusion strategic plan and the community engagement there around what helps people to feel safe, but it's clear that it is a broad, diverse spectrum of information. And I know we've talked about potentially using like Civic Genius to do some sort of like, you know, guided community conversation or, you know, we have our community conversations or our terrace talks. I don't know what the right forum is, but it does feel like the opportunity for folks to come together to better understand, you know, one another and their concerns about safety and also to recognize, while I know I've said time and again, I feel very safe in our community and, you know, our community engagement survey says the vast majority of folks do, there is a percentage of folks who don't feel safe in our community. And it would be really helpful as a council member to better understand where those concerns lie and how we might be able to move the needle on that number. So hopefully more and more folks in our community feel safe every year. So I guess I would love to just put that out there as an opportunity for maybe us to have a discussion about what the, what a forum could look like to have some of those conversations.
Yeah, I took a note of that comment and we will brainstorm ways to make that happen. I think it'd be a valuable conversation and we'll, we'll see what format looks best.
Awesome, thank you. Mayor Potem Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, just following up on that, I love that idea, I think that we, it's definitely one we should pursue and understand from a lot of different perspectives. And a kind of a footnote on that, one of the things I found really interesting, I don't know if you've seen what Seattle does on safety issues and the number one safety issue in Seattle has risen over the last year to be traffic. So public safety and lack of, or lack thereof are biggest concern for public safety is traffic now in Seattle. And I'm just, I don't know if there's a way to be able to help, first of all, to get, get that data and information from Seattle and the surveys that they regularly do on that to understand, to see that and then be able to have that as part of that conversation to understand, you know, how much of it is traffic versus other, other issues and challenges and what can we be doing about those, you know, any and all issues related to safety. But when it comes to traffic safety, you know, what else can we be doing? Because that's been a topic of concern for us for a number of years as well. So just be able to better understand that and look at it like the traffic calming and the safe streets for all, you know, and how we might be able to incorporate some of those strategies into, into our community if in fact that is one of the biggest concerns that our residents have as well. So anyway, good note, thank you.
Councilmember Woodard?
Yeah, just to bring this up because the two set it up nicely, this council actually already is supporting a version of this conversation at the next Chamber of Commerce meeting. We actually had Audrey Meyer come through and mention the organization that's doing training around the issues with ICE and how that feels for certain residents. And so they actually will be at the next council, excuse me, at the next Chamber of Commerce meeting, which I think is at SCOG. We can probably find out with that information. Okay, good. I say I'm lost in the timeline. Was that the last one or was it the next one? Last one was the tavern, next one's at SCOG. And I don't have that date, but nonetheless, for folks that are wondering what's a version of safety and conversation, that would be a great one to enter into because as you're hearing, safety is a very broad topic and can be taken a lot of different ways, but the way I think it was being introduced here by tying it back to, I think he was tying it back to Flock, the Chamber of Commerce conversation would be a good one for you to go and just engage in if you're really interested in this topic.
Okay, anyone else? Oh, you only had to extend for five minutes.
Two more.
For adjourn.